Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to call to order, I call this regular meeting to order at 6:32 PM. Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Manchaca.
Please rise, face the flag, put your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, real call please.
Mayor Wu.
Here.
Vice Mayor Manchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Present.
Close session report. Our city attorney will now give the closed session report from the special meeting held earlier tonight.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Council took up one item in closed session this evening, and that was negotiation with various employee groups that are listed on the agenda. No reportable actions were taken by the city council in closed session.
Thank you. We will now have some announcements from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is live streamed on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at this time. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Approval of agenda order. We will now have a statement by city attorney regarding an addition of a new item.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, staff is requesting that the council consider adding an item to the existing agenda. Bronak provides for the grounds for such an addition to an agenda that's already been posted. Those grounds are if the information that gave rise to the item was received by staff not in sufficient amount of time, or after posting the agenda, if there's a financial consequence of any kind related to not moving the item forward, and third is if the item cannot wait till the next regular meeting. What we have before, we would ask you to put on the agenda is a ratification of a proclamation of emergency that was signed by the city manager and put into place on January 20th as a result of the fires and windstorms that continue to exist in our area. The council has seven days to ratify that proclamation, and that is why we ask you to add this to the agenda today, so you can take action on it. With regard to financial circumstances, there is at least well over $100,000 of employee-staff time that's been spent already in response to this emergency. So there is money at stake, and we ask you to vote to add this item to the agenda.
I have a question, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Martin, so if we want to add this, would it be under new business? Or where in the agenda would we add it?
Seven B.
It's under new business, yes. And the vote is just to add it, and you would take action on that item when it comes up on the agenda.
Thank you, city attorney. So is there a motion to approve the addition of the new business item to the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by councilmember Chan.
I'll second.
A second by Vice Mayor Manchaca. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next item, please. So this is a second motion request, that is any motions to approve the agenda order.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
I'll move to approve as amended, to add it to the business section. It would be the last section, last item, under business. Okay.
Thank you. Is motion made by Vice Mayor Manchaca?
Second.
Second by councilmember Tony Ding. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Presentations. Introduction of new police employees. Police Chief Elizalde will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Wu, Vice Mayor Manchaca, Councilman Ding, Councilman Chan, and Councilman Herrera Avila. Thank you for having us tonight. It's a great pleasure to be in front of you and the community to welcome some of our newest staff members, police officers and non-sworn staff members to our organization. And I'll be doing that right now, and also not only calling up the employees, but some of their family members to present their badge to them. So the first employee up is Andrea Hadamio. She is our evidence and property technician. She was hired on September 23rd of 2024, born in Bellflower and raised in Irwindale. She has an associate's degree in correction of justice, I'm sorry, correction and justice administration from Rio Hondo Community College, and I will be presenting her badge for her tonight. Our next employee is Mike Chung, our records specialist. Mike was hired on October 5th of 2024, born in China and raised in Hong Kong. He has a bachelor's degree in administration and public management from the City University of Hong Kong. And tonight, Mike's wife Rainbow will be presenting his badge to him. Our first officer, Lori Morales. Lori was hired on March 9th of 2024, born in Boyle Heights and raised in La Puente. She has an associate's degree from Rio Hondo Community College and graduated from the Rio Hondo Police Academy on July 3rd of 2024, class 216. Tonight, presenting her badge is her father, Jaime Morales. And next we have Noah Alvarado. Noah was hired on October 19th of last year, born in Baldwin Park, raised in Southgate, Pasadena, and San Gabriel. He has a history with us, and not just started as an officer, but started early on and worked his way up to becoming an officer. He has an associate's degree from East LA College and graduated the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Academy on October 4th. And tonight, presenting his badge is his mother, Jeanette. Now we have Mr. Frank Bernard. He was hired on November 2nd, 2024, born and raised in Monterey Park. He has a Masters of Business Association, I'm sorry, Administration from Southern New Hampshire University, and he's a graduate of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Academy. Tonight, his fiancee Flor will be presenting his badge to him.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief, and welcome aboard. Next item, please.
Community Emergency Response Team Program Completion Recognition. Mayor Captain Taka Suzuki will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Wu, city council members, city managers, city attorney. Thank you for having us, and also thank you to Chief Wallace for allowing us to present tonight. I just want to recognize 12 CERT members. And if you're not familiar with what CERT stands for, it's Community Emergency Response Team. Basically, the nitty-gritty of it is that if anything went down in terms of a disaster, which we have seen on the Eaton Fire and the Palisades recently, we prepare our community and the members how to deal with being without resources for at least 72 hours. Right? If you can imagine, you're being evacuated, all your stuff is left there. If you didn't have a plan, you kind of would be screwed, unfortunately, with lack of better terms. Right? All right? You're gonna have to figure things out. Where's all my paperwork's documents? Where do I get water? So all these CERT members that we have trained in the past, as well as these 12 today, have put 20 hours of their weekend, Friday night, all the way till 9:00 PM, and then Saturday, Sunday, all day, dedicating their time to actually be useful and prepared for any kind of major disaster. So I'd like to just bring them up, recognize them, and then if you don't mind, if we could all take a picture, that'd be wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so just go down the list. Ming Jun Chen, Jeff Chen, Sam Chung, Hugo Gonzalez, Clarabel Gutierrez, Asia Ko, Jaden Larai, Robert Mercado, Janine Rojo, Kiana Tilma, Tracy Trung, and Kwan Wong. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Retirement of K-9 Officer Bentley. Police Chief Elizalde will make the presentation, and Mayor Wu will present the certificate of recognition.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Here he is, here's his moment. Bentley and his handler, Paul. They've been such a great commodity and a family member to the organization. Bentley has his own followers on social media and does a great job. When we think about an asset for the organization and to the community, have to look no further than Bentley. And he set the bar very high. And reviewing some of the documents regarding his training and the dedication that his handler Paul put into this, Paul has set the bar for handlers within the San Gabriel Valley, if not LA County. And I'm very proud to present him to you, Mayor, for tonight, for his retirement and out of service, but always part of our family. I'd like to call up Sue, a longtime supporter and advocate for our K-9 program, to present both Paul and Bentley, a small token of appreciation.
Not Sue, it's Mary. That's okay. This is a plaque that we're presenting to Bentley. It says, "More than a Partner." "My dog is more than my partner to see because he's very good friend to me. He's the nose I don't have, the eyes I have not. He's one of the best partners most cops ain't got. Day by day, we do what we do best. His four paws never seem to rest. He always does whatever I ask, seeming to enjoy every task. I know one day his work will be done, but for now, we can only have fun. For my dog is more than a partner to me. My dog is my best friend, and he'll always will be. Bentley."
Good evening, council. Back again. As a former K-9 coordinator, I'd like to present this plaque to Bentley and Paul. Supervising both have been excellent. I can't mirror what the chief said. Bentley has been a very excellent asset to this organization, and I'll miss this dog. And I put this together for Bentley and Paul. Thank you.
Yes, please.
So thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, and city manager for having us up here to formally recognize K-9 Bentley's retirement. Having a police dog in any organization makes everything safer for everybody. We're looking for dangerous suspects hiding throughout our community. And Bentley did a lot over the past seven years that he was 10-8 with the patrol shift. Just wanted to say that, you know, Bentley over the past seven years became my best friend, and I want to formally thank everybody for the support over the years. Thank you to Sue Fitzsimmons for everything that she's done for us. Thank you for the supportive lieutenant I have, who's now retired, Lieutenant Cruz Hernandez. And especially thank you to my family for putting up with all the odd hours over the years and, you know, the amount of training we do. I wasn't home a lot, so just want to thank you guys for the support. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and I truly appreciate. I truly appreciate, especially Sue, that you've been doing so much for the K-9. And actually, all our council, we do a good job on holding our tears because Bentley has been serving in our city for seven years, and he is the first police dog in Sido, San Gabriel, in history. So we all remember you, and thank you so much for the services. Thank you. Next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the clerk. And Mr. Mayor, I have no cards submitted.
Thank you. And no cards, so next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. We have not received a request from the public to pull an item.
Thank you. Would any council member like to pull an item for separate discussion? I see none. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Yes. Motion by Vice Mayor Manchaca. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Ding. And please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Public hearing A. Ordinance Number 716, amending Chapter 153 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code relating to hedge heights in the residential zones. Introduction and first reading.
I now open the public hearing. Planning Manager Samantha Torresart will make the staff presentation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you is Zone Text Amendment ZTA 24-004, again relating to hedge heights in residential zones. According to the city's code, the city council may, from time to time, after a report by the commission and after public hearings, amend, supplement, or change the regulations and zones established by the code. An amendment, supplement, or change may be initiated by the city council, the commission, or by application by property owners. On September 17th of last year, information options related to a potential update or amendment to San Gabriel Municipal Code Section 153.127, again relating to fences, walls, and hedges in residential zones, was presented to the city council to provide comments. The city council commented that there are existing hedge height inconsistencies throughout the city, and that maintenance is an important factor, and directed staff to draft a proposed zone text amendment. Currently, hedge heights are regulated similar to walls and fences. There are hedge heights standards for residential and non-residential zones. The proposed amendments will focus only on hedge heights in residential zones, including R1, R1A, R2, and R3. And no changes are proposed to the non-residential zones. The maximum height for any fence, wall, or hedge currently is four feet in the front and six feet along the sides and rear of the yards. And trees, shrubs, and hedges in the public right-of-way are regulated by Chapter 95 of the municipal code. And no person shall plant, move, remove, replace any tree, shrub, or hedge within the right-of-way without a permit. The responsibility of property owners to maintain, it is the responsibility of property owners to maintain trees and shrubs that are planted immediately adjacent to their respective properties. And the code does not address height limits within the public right-of-way area. A survey of neighboring cities was conducted, and the survey showed that similar to adjacent cities, San Gabriel has the same height regulations. And again, that's four feet in the front and six feet along the sides and the rear. Here's an example of a handout that is provided to the public. The dark line represents the six-feet location, and the dash line represents the four feet. And this is the proposed amendments. It shows the strike through, which represents the proposed deletion. And as shown on the slide, it is to remove hedges from the height requirements. And this again continues just to show the strike through of hedges in the code section. As to maintenance, the code, there's existing language within the code under Chapter 98.02, Maintenance of Premise. Under Section Q, it does states that properties are not to create hazards to the public by obstructing visibility of or any public right-of-way road intersection or pedestrian walkway. And then also as to maintenance, that properties are to be maintained, irrigated, fertilized, and trimmed, as well as maintaining of the ground cover. Here are a few examples. These were recently, or taken as recently as last week, which shows just the variety of hedge types or questions that staff sometimes receive. The picture to the left shows cypress trees that have grown into each other. And it will be addressed later on in the definitions discussion, where the definition would define the photo to the left as a hedge. The one in the center, it's maintained to keep the separation between the trees, but ultimately, it's very similar. And the one to the right, essentially, is a hedge that is overgrown, maybe sometimes maintained, but what's unique about this one is that hedge is located along the rear property line to the property to the left, but the front property line of the property to the right. So there are those cases. Also here, the photo to the left shows a hedge in the public right-of-way, so there are those instances, as mentioned, where there are hedges within the public right-of-way. The center photo shows a combination of trees and a hedge. The center photo shows a combination of trees and a hedge, and so, questions would come up as to where that separation begins and ends. And also, the image to the right shows a corner property. It is a hedge that exceeds the height, but it is maintained. And here, it actually shows examples of hedges that, at some point in time, may be maintaining the height limits, but in between maintenance sessions, it will ultimately grow beyond what is the height limits. And so, in a week or two, maybe when the hedges maintain, it would meet the height requirement, but then, especially when there's rains, then easily a hedge can exceed the height limit. The picture to the right shows that even adjacent properties, one appears to be maintaining the height limit, but then the one next door, although maintaining their height, does exceed the height limit. So, as mentioned in the report, there are just many variations of hedges and hedge heights within the city. The proposed draft amendment was presented to the Planning Commission on the November 18th meeting of last year, and the Planning Commission agreed to recommend to the City Council to adopt the proposed ordinance with a five-o vote, but then to also consider, to give consideration to safety standards within the front yard, quality of life, aesthetics, uniformity, obstructions of view, and giving consideration to height limits between six to nine feet. The recommendation before the City Council this evening is to conduct a public hearing and to discuss the proposed ordinance Number 716, waive the full reading, and introduce ordinance 716 by title only, and that's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Gabriel, California, amending Chapter 153, the zoning code of St. Gabriel Municipal Code relating to hedge heights in residential zones, and then to waive the future reading of the ordinance and schedule the second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the next regular City Council meeting, and the ordinance would then become effective 30 days after. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Samantha. You will be so busy tonight. But does any Councilmember have a question for Samantha to clarify? And I see, please.
On the attachment H, it says ornamental screening. I kind of want to, I want to get clarification on where you see the bottom part, where it says the property line, and it says the 15 minimum. I see that is offset a little bit. Can you explain that? It's not the, is that the front of the property line? Is it going all around? Or is there going to be a setback on the requirement?
Yes, what's considered an ornamental wall as opposed to a perimeter wall is that it does have that setback, which allows for the greater height, which is why it's categorized as an ornamental wall as opposed to a perimeter wall.
So, just to be clear, where it says the property line, just again.
Yes.
From where it says the property line, and then we have the legend right there indicating that dark, bold line, is there a 15-feet minimum?
The setback of the wall.
The setback.
From the property line.
And this is talking, referring to the wall or to a hedge?
It is the property line. Currently, it applies to walls, fences, and hedges, as shown.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes.
But it's 15 feet. I mean, where you drew the line, where the line is drawn here, is that a hedge? Is that an example of a hedge?
That's representative of either a wall, fence, or hedge, the dark line, going parallel to the front property line, setback 15 feet.
So, that dark line there, the, what's being proposed is that all of that dark circle there, it's unlimited height, unlimited height? Only that dark circle, or dark square, or rectangle?
So, the proposal is to remove the heights for hedges. But as for walls and fences, that will remain in place.
Any other questions? Councilmember Dean? Oh, your light is on, so. Sorry. But let me know. Okay. So, Sam, just a quick question. About the maintenance requirements, is that a new additions to this code?
No, that's existing.
It's existing.
Yes.
Okay, good. And the Neighborhood Improvement Service will be patrolled, and if they see something is not really comply with the codes, then we will give them a notice or citation.
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, great. Thank you. So, Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do. Mr. Mayor, Doug Richter.
Okay. Thank you.
Doug Richter, Montecito Drive in St. Gabriel. Good evening, Mayor Will, Vice Mayor Manchaca, and Rest of the City Council, and Mark. Okay, I have no objection, basically, to taking the limits away for the hedge, but I also would like to take away the limits on the walls, to be fair to all the citizens in St. Gabriel. Other words, okay, where I live, all the walls are six feet. Up the street, there's a hedge that's eight feet. It's in the front. It's not even in the back. It's on the side. And a third of it is dead, and you can see right through, so people aren't maintaining it. So, anyway, just to bring, just to bring the idea up, that if we're going to have a limit on the heights on hedges, we should also have an unlimited height on walls, maybe not a 10 or 20 feet, but maybe, you know, seven, eight feet. Now, Mark and I are both over six feet, so both of us can see over walls that are so many six feet high. So, the sort of, privacy is sort of restricted to certain people under six feet, so anybody over six feet could see into your yard. So, also, for privacy rules, I would also like to have the wall heights of fence, whether they be wood, or cinder block, or wrought iron, whatever, to have them all over six feet, raised to eight to 10 feet. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other speaker card?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Now, I close the public hearing, and it's time for Councilmembers to, you know, deliberations and discussion. Who would like to go first? Anyone? Yes, Vice Mayor?
I'll start, but I'm sure there's going to be a lot of other discussion. Samantha, I just wanted to clarify. I think it gets a little tricky here, because we are only talking about the fence and the wall. The hedge situation really needs, should be a separate discussion, because we're removing it from the ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, the item before the Council this evening is to remove hedges specifically from the walls and fences section. If the City Council would like to revisit or to discuss additional regulations for hedges in a separate area, then that would be a part of City Council's discussion this evening. However, what's being proposed is just to remove hedges from the current section.
Okay, so really, we're focusing on fence and walls, as defined, actually, in the next section.
That's existing, yes, and in place, and then it's the removal of hedges from that section.
Okay. Well, after the discussion, maybe we need to talk to see if maybe we need a different discussion for the enforcement, because there is, I mean, we talk about maintenance, but I'm assuming there has to be some guidelines for maintenance, because you showed us quite a few pictures, and they're all over the place, and if our, if we don't have clear enforcement or clear guidance, like, it can get a little tricky, where some people might be getting, you know, not getting those, unless a neighbor reports them, you know, they're able to do whatever they want. So, I would like to see a separate discussion for hedges. But regarding hedges, because it's in here, it's embedded in here, I know for myself, as I was looking through this, I do like the fact that hedges, it's, it's a little more softer. You know, we talked about green, we can talk about, you know, it's not as rough, because if you have a street full of fences that are either concrete or metal, or whatever else, you know, you can choose, it just, just seems a little more rough, I guess. It feels like a fortress. So, I do prefer hedges over fence and walls, but as a homeowner, homeowner, I know that there is a very practical reason to have a fence or wall. I know, I am also, as one of the comments were made, I know this, this ordinance, it was put in place in, what, 1950s or something like that? I think they were shorter in those days, because there are, it's true, you know, a lot more, I mean, I got two center lots that are, you know, six feet tall, and then I know Mark, and, you know, there's not much of a purpose if everyone could look over. And then you have the coyotes, I mean, I know they can jump eight feet, 10 feet, but still, it just seems like six feet is just so low that it doesn't serve the purpose, so I would like to hear from my colleagues, but I think we should elevate that, maybe to eight feet. But my first question is, so anyway, that's just kind of some background, some kind of things I'm thinking about, but I wanted to get clarification, if a homeowner has, establishes a fence, like a six-feet fence, and decides, you know what, I need something higher, and if we keep it at the six feet, if that's what our ordinance ends up being, if they add ivy on it, could it be bigger? Or do they need to establish, like, hedges right next to it to make it taller? I mean, is, because I've seen also, as I drive around, where people put ivy, and it's kind of their way of hiding that concrete, and then you can also get a little higher elevation if you put some things on top of the fence, and the ivy starts growing around it. So, would that homeowner be out of compliance? Because the fence is actually the foundation, or is that something that would be part of our code? I'm just trying to kind of think it through.
Well, it would be the latter, in that to compensate for the current height limit of block walls and fences, property owners would use landscaping to get that additional height. However, under the current definition, the hedge is also limited to the height limit. What's proposed tonight would eliminate that to allow hedges and landscaping to be taller than the six-feet limit for block walls and fences, which will be kept in place based on the proposed ordinance tonight.
So, I'm saying, so would they be able to add the ivy onto the fence, and so they can get the higher elevation, or do they have to plant hedges separately and allow that to go, to give them the height?
Technically, if the ordinance passed, then whether adding ivy or a planting material to grow onto the fence or adjacent to the fence, that would allow for the greater height.
For the extra height.
Right. But as it's written, it would not.
Okay. Okay. And this code, the reason we have it is because we want to be consistent. Is that correct? So, it sounds like we, I mean, we've always had the six-feet fence, but the consistency is really between the hedge and the fence, not necessarily about the fence. People have always abided or complied with the six-foot fence? Is that true?
Fencing is a more permanent structure, whereas landscaping will grow depending on the weather, the maintenance, whatever it may be.
Okay, so, yeah, you can easily remedy it if we change, if we change the ordinance. You can make the hedge as tall as you want or as low. Okay. And then, for mixed-use properties, it doesn't apply, right? Because we have a lot of mixed-use, and they're not considered residential? They're considered commercial?
Right, so mixed-use and commercial are considered the non-residential category, which has its own set of standards.
Okay, so strictly, so this is residential fencing and walls, strictly. Okay. Let's see. Let me just go through my notes here. Okay. Let's see, yeah, I also had a question about the side yard, street, and the hedge and fencing. I mean, if you're on a, if you have a corner house, like I do, the rules are different, correct?
That's correct. So, as shown on the handout, the dash line represents a four-feet height limit, and the solid line represents the six.
Okay.
So, there are greater restrictions for corner properties.
Okay. And that's consistent with other cities, too. I mean, we're not doing anything unusual. Okay. So, I guess I'll wait to hear from my colleagues, but I do like us to consider maybe increasing the height limit for the fence, and, let's see, I think, and then having a, bringing back a discussion about the hedge, so we can tighten that up also. So, that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, before I proceed with another question, I just quick clarification need probably from Samantha. If there be any more amendment about a fence, does that need to submit to the Planning Commission again?
That's correct.
Right, so I would suggest my colleagues, maybe we just stick with what we focus on, the amendments for the code today. So, after today, we have, you know, solved the problem, then we can just bring it back for the fence discussion. But this is just a suggestion. You two can discuss if you like. Thank you. So, yes.
If I may, Mayor.
Please.
The height of the block fences, anything that is not a hedge fence is not on the agenda tonight, so I would recommend that a council limit this conversation to the hedges.
Thank you.
In the ordinance, and if wishes, if the council wishes to address the height of the walls, you can direct that to the Planning Manager and initiate the process.
Yes.
To the Planning Commission or Agenda. I didn't have a meeting initially about that here.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Martin. So, if there, anything that you would like to bring back, you can raise, you can just bring back on the council comments, so we can just have the next one. So, yes, Councilmember Dean?
Just with your clarification, so today, just for the hedge only, if they have the wall or fence, they want to use the, like, ivy, something, not as the discussion, so still restricted for our current, the code.
For block walls and fences.
Block wall and fences. Even they put on it. Okay. So, that's, that's I wanted to do, too. Okay. Yeah. And just using my opportunity, and first, for the recommendation from the Planning Commissioner, from the, for the staff report and your today's report, and you say the Planning Commissioner on the staff report on the book, it's four-two-zero.
Oh, I apologize, it's five-to-zero. Oh, it was four-to-zero. I'm sorry.
Four-to-zero. Yeah, today's the one, it's a five-to-zero.
Yes, I apologize. Four-to-zero.
Okay. All right. That's all I want to clarify. Okay. Yeah, okay, so, but for the, for the, like, also, next one question, is it talking about some, cities do have the planning department or commissioners do have the right to, just in case for the safety purpose, if have the restriction, too?
That is correct. It's currently in the municipal code.
Even change the, you know, unlimited, no limit for the hedge height?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, that properties, that properties cannot create hazardous conditions.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's reasonable, but I just want to see if people really want to apply, if we have argument, the Planning Department say it is for the safety purpose, they say, hey, that's, don't have the safety purpose. So, for, if you face this kind of argument, how can we do it?
In those cases, staff would ask for the assistance from the Public Works Department, and it's typically related to sightlines and views, and the Engineering Division would come and help to evaluate the conditions.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Samantha. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dean. Anyone else? Yeah, Councilmember here, Alvila.
So, we're going to, this is to completely remove the wording of hedges, right?
Correct.
So, in essence, after we remove it, and if we approve, then anybody can grow their hedges as much as they want, front, back, side, all around the perimeter. Is that correct?
Right, right. So, it would specifically address heights.
Right. Because my understanding, as it is now, it was that it was six feet on the sides, right? And then in the front yard, four feet.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. So I'm for, I can, I think I can say what I'm feeling, right, Mark? Yeah, so I'm for the sides, but to be, for privacy reasons, however big the hedges are, are limited to a certain degree, right? Of course, considering like the wildfires and making sure that people are maintaining their hedges and all that. But then when we start talking about the front yard, when we went from having the guidelines of four feet, and now we're going to allow everybody and anybody to go beyond that point, I think we should come back and revisit this and get the community involved to see how they feel about this. Maybe four to six might not be that of a difference. I saw a lot that of hedges that are not getting enforced. Some are really well-maintained, some are completely blocking the property, and it becomes a fire hazard to a certain extent, right? But I really would like to get the community involved as far as having the discussions of how we want to preserve the aesthetics of the city, right? If we say, okay, well, we're not going to regulate hedge height for the front, too, I think we're going to get into a slippery slope with safety and with the residents. So I think we should start considering to have a discussion about what that height's going to be across the city, because right now, if we approve this, it's going to just eliminate all the hedge requirements across, even from the front of the property. So that's where I stand with that. I yield back.
Okay, so anyone else? So, okay, I have no further questions for you as well.
Sorry.
Yes, Martin, please.
Yeah, that's, that's the, also, I want to talk about consideration with this wildfire. So it's a very tall tree, also caused a problem, too. And because the wind or fire, it's caused the tree falling down and hit, they're same, their own property or neighborhood property. If we give to them it's too higher, maybe we should be also consideration, what's the reasonable? The, yeah, because we want to, like, especially this time the fire, so probably we think we need a consideration about that, the hedge height, you know? Yeah, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, so I'm still trying to understand, why can't we ask to bring the hedge heights back during this section versus having to wait till council comments? Can't that just be part of this, that we approve this, which is only fence and walls, we can, you know, talk about some adjustments there, and then ask that the hedge section be brought back? Because it's in here, the hedging, the hedging, the hedge heights is part of this discussion.
What is before the council, this ordinance would eliminate restrictions on hedge height, restrictions on fences and block walls, et cetera, would remain in the code as they are written. I think the staff is asking, and what the planning commission recommended, is that council pass the ordinance, we should simply take the hedges out of the height consideration for any boundary of a residential house. If it's your desire to discuss the hedges and their height, then this is the time to do it. What I was recommending is that you do not initiate a discussion about how tall the block wall should be or the fences, because those items are not before you. But anything having to do with hedges, their heights, on any part of the property is fair game for discussion today.
The ordinance does say this height of the fence, doesn't it say six feet here? And four feet in the front?
But we're removing the hedges from that definition.
Okay.
So the height of the fence would remain for block walls and fences, as is in the code, and we're not agendized today to change that part of it. If you wish to retain the hedges in that equation, or alter it some way, that'd be the time, or decide that you want to remove them or not remove them, just don't do anything, and they'll stay in there as they are.
Okay, so what if I want to make a motion to go with the recommendation of removing the hedge and bring back a hedge discussion after, you know, going through the process, like, through the planning commission? Can't that, make that kind of recommendation?
Yes, Mark.
Vice Mayor Manchaca may ask one quick question. When you ask about a discussion on hedges, I just want to make sure that we can provide a discussion that meets the questions that you have. Are you talking about the maintenance of hedges and how they're trimmed and well-maintained? Or are you talking about new height limits for them, or what exactly would you?
All of the above. So since we're removing hedges from this ordinance, then we need to look at and discuss, or I believe discuss, everything else that's been talked about, because there are, you know, different heights, there's maintenance, it just seems like if we're removing it, we need to put it somewhere else so we can be addressed, and it's not being addressed anywhere else, if we take it out from here, because it's been living here for a while, now we're taking it out.
So we do have maintenance, and Samantha, if you would mind putting up on that other slide. So we do have some code requirements related to the maintenance, and people need to take care of them, trim them, and the community development director would have the ability to enforce those restrictions. There are always, any maintenance things are always going to be subjective, unfortunately, there's not going to be a way to really regulate that. If you're talking about wanting to add different heights for hedges on different parts of the property, for instance, four feet in the front yard, that is something we can talk about tonight, because I believe the hedge height discussion is exactly what we're here for. We would have to come back with a revised ordinance for council at a future meeting, because we haven't agendized that in the ordinance. But if you'd like us to add a section that says, for example, in the front yard, hedges have to be four feet or less, you can provide that direction to us tonight. It wouldn't be a vote, because we'd be coming back with, or you could vote if you want to give us that formal direction, but we couldn't enact that tonight, we'd have to come back with a revised ordinance. So we would be more than happy to do that, if that's what the council is looking for. If you want to have a facilitated discussion on what that should be, then we can do it at that time. If you have heights that are, the council wants to talk about tonight, we can bring that back in an ordinance for adoption at the next meeting, so.
Okay, so.
Whatever the pleasure of the council.
So I just know, that's a different ordinance, that's 98.02, this is 153, so it's a whole different ordinance, the maintenance part. So what I would like to see is we make a recommendations that's focused on just the fence and the wall. I still like us to be able to consider increasing from six feet to eight feet. I know the planning commission is asking here between six feet and nine and a half feet, I'm not sure why nine and a half specifically, but that was their recommendation. And then with the direction, if we can get three people to agree, to bring back the hedge discussion, to give staff time and to give the planning commission time to review more closely. That's a huge, that's a lot there, but I just don't want the hedge just to kind of be tossed aside, because I think there's some valuable discussion that should take place, because it is prevalent, and as two of the council members have mentioned, you know, we do have the fire element that maybe should be part of the discussion, too, but it gives everyone time to kind of really flush out all the details. But I understand tonight is strictly just the fence and the wall, but it's all related in one way or another. Maybe you can help me summarize it better?
Well, I would, I'd ask a quick question, but you're right, I think it is all intertwined. I don't necessarily think that if you're interested, if the full or the majority of the council is interested in having a discussion about the heights, I wouldn't necessarily move forward tonight and just remove it. I think count, staff can take a different approach. The direction we were given last time was we just don't, the council just doesn't think that we should limit heights anywhere, and so that's why it was written the way it was. But certainly, we can have a new section that relates only to hedges, or if you want to continue to regulate hedges at same heights, so we can take another stab at it. My one question would be, does council want this to go back through the planning commission for discussion, or do you want to keep this at the, at the city council level and come right back to the city council?
Well, I'm sorry, so my only height request is for the fence and the wall. The hedging I haven't really thought about, maybe once it's brought back, you know, I may decide that maybe, you know, after the planning commission, and again, after we really vet this out, maybe I'll change my mind and think, okay, there's, you know, maybe we should have a limit to the hedge, but for tonight, I'm just asking for the height to be increased, just for the fence and wall. That's all I'm asking.
That would be a separate item.
Oh, it's still a separate item.
Can I say something? Yeah, so, yeah, I know the, we also, it's agreed to the consideration, but I saw that this requirement maintenance to property, it's still, I think the planning commission also consideration, too. I think maybe they discuss, I don't know, okay, I don't have the documentation, but from my understanding, if we have these maintenance requirement, probably we still, like, if we want to enforcement, so can we write a, like, notice, say, you are not well-maintained, so you should be cut something, it's a well-maintained, so more flexible, is it, from my understanding? So we don't need to, like, really restrict, like, hedge higher, but it just use the well-maintained safety purpose. Is that correct?
You're correct, Councilmember Ding, and in fact, that's how council arrived at the direction last time. I think the discussion was that height isn't what makes a hedge nice or not. Council said you could have a four-foot hedge that somebody doesn't maintain, and it could be very ugly. You could have a 10-foot hedge that somebody manicures and takes good care of, and it could be very good-looking and unobtrusive. So what council directed was, let's worry more about people maintaining it and less about the heights, and so that's what you have before you tonight.
Okay, so that's solved, at least it solved my problem question, too. So we still, cities still have the right to do something if they're not well-maintained?
Not only, not only not well-maintained, but also if they cause a safety hazard. For example, if it's in an area where it makes it difficult for somebody turning a corner to see, and then also somebody pulling out of their driveway, if it's on the city property, something like that, we still have abilities to regulate that.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So it would be my recommendation, if majority of the council desires to revisit the height of hedges, and you are on the property lines, that this item basically be continued and for further discussion, or you can discuss it tonight, but if there's some changes that are being contemplated, that perhaps you're not prepared to discuss today, passing this ordinance, removing the hedges out of it, and then having to wait 30 days till it becomes effective, and then taking up another discussion just to potentially put something back in it, may not be the best use of time or most efficient way to approach it.
Well, yeah, I just, I have a few words to share with my colleagues. I think, too, my colleagues has concern about a fire hazard, but I'm not an operator, so I do not know if hedges actually cause more fires than other trees. So if the height of the hedges will be causing the fire, then we should probably treat other plant inside their house, like, in the backyard, if the tree is more than six feet high, that could cause fire as well. So I think we can focus on if we want to remove the height limits for the hedges tonight, or any of my council colleagues would like to, you know, motion, but would like to suggest bring it back, and we do not have a continuing discussion tonight, that would be fine as well.
Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry. I just want to let everyone know, on page four, the last sentence, the planning commission said for the city council to consider additional options such as establish, establishing standards for safety in the front yard, quality of life, athletics, uniformity, obstruction of views, and establishing a minimum and maximum between six feet and nine and one, and one and a half feet. You know, those are things that we're not really, I don't think we're really discussing today, even with the fence and wall, I'm not sure what all that was meant. That was one of my questions, but unfortunately, I didn't ask it the first time, but I just think there's more here, and I don't know what the planning commission was looking at or what they wanted us to do, because tonight, all I'm seeing is get rid of hedge, approve it, move on. And I think, I think we're asking for a little bit more than that, so.
So I would suggest maybe just bring the topic back again, but it still remain in council members' level. How about that? Not bring back to, because we have no clear direction to the planning commission, and tell them what we want to do and see if they can bring some report back to us. So instead of that, how about we just postpone this items to the next council meeting, and we can have a more detailed discussion.
Okay. I mean, it's up to the, I mean, there's our, are there three of us that want it, on that?
Do we need a, do we need a motion on this?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Uh, Chen, please.
So if we do bring this back, I mean, would we, would we make direction to the staff to say that in our, in our next discussion, we want to be able to discuss the hedge heights and the walls and the fences, to, so that we can discuss all of it? Is that what we're saying? So that way, we don't have to?
That is an option that you have.
Then, so if that's my understanding, then if the rest of the council prefers, then we can bring it back and have a full discussion on all heights, I guess, you know? Then that way, it's encompassing that we can talk about the hedges and the walls and the fences and whatever rules we want for everything. Would that be?
And then if the council wishes to proceed in a direction, the question that the city manager asked would be important, for as far as direction to staff, would you like the planning commission to consider that subject before you see it again, or do you want to keep it at the council level and simply move forward with changes, potential changes to the ordinance at this level?
I think we can handle it at this level. What do my colleagues think? I don't think we need to bring it back to the commission, but what is the pleasure?
Yes, Mark, please.
I would say that if council wants us to bring it back, we can talk about the changes, and ultimately, you can decide at that point, if there's so many changes that you want the planning commission to look at it, you can, or you can keep it at this level, but absolutely, we can bring it back, so you can discuss all fences, hedges, and walls. The only reason we can't tonight is because you had a proposed ordinance that's very specific, but if we have a general discussion on fence, hedge, and wall heights, then everything is fair game.
Mayor?
Yes.
So I would agree on that, too, to get a full package on this, and then not just pass the, removing the hedges, because then we remove the hedges, and then we don't have any guidelines in place for the, for the hedges all across, even in front of the property, and now you have people taking advantage of that and planning all around, and then we could bring this back, and then we maybe have some requirements, so now they're going to have to chop down to whatever size they want, or what we want, or we say. I think bringing it back would be the best thing, to have a full package and to get awareness of the community. I would be in favor for that.
Any other comment?
Yeah, but if, yeah, back, if a full discussion for the wall and the fence, it's better, I think, still let the planning commission to discuss, because we, I hope, get the more opinion from the planning commission. Yeah, I agree, to full package, we discuss, but, yeah, but I think it's better listen the planning commission, their advice, too, you know?
So Mayor, for staff's clarification, is the direction from the council to re-establish height limits within the front yard?
No, actually, I believe that my colleagues would like to just, just stop discussion, discuss about the topic, this topic tonight, and would like to bring back, including the hedge heights plus the fence heights, and together as a package.
Is the understanding to increase the height of walls and fences along the rear and side yards, but to limit the hedge heights in the front yard and to maintain the height limit? but to limit the hedge heights in the front yard and to maintain the height limit for block wall and fences in the front yard? Because essentially, what is presented before the city council this evening is Section 153.27, specific to block walls, fences, and hedges within the residential zones. And as mentioned, what is shown here is the proposed strike-throughs and what the code will look like. For staff's clarification, understanding is the direction then to further amend what is presented before the council this evening?
Right. So from the, from the last, actually, from the last time, the reason we have the discussion tonight is because last council meeting, we have instructed them to bring this report and to amend the code.
Just for the hedge, yeah, just direct, we didn't think about the wall and the fence, you know.
Was it? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. If everybody is in agreement with having a discussion, I can work with Samantha, and we will come back with a discussion on all of this. I do want to point out for the council and, and not get direction, but just to let you all know, we do have code enforcement cases that are currently in place for hedge heights, because our code does currently require those four-foot limits. And we have put all of those on hold, because, you know, in two weeks or two months, council could decide to allow those to be tall. And it feels kind of punitive on staff's part to go and make folks remove those hedges if council will turn around and let six- or eight-foot hedges be in their place later on. So I just want council to know that that's the, the direction that staff has been taking. If you feel otherwise, we would continue with enforcement the way the code currently stands. But as of right now, we have been just putting those on hold until we get direction from council.
So which means that if we do not do anything tonight, then we probably will need to either enforce the code or keep extending the time until we have a discussion and conclusion. Is that correct?
That's right. And the biggest thing that staff has, we can always give you our professional guidance or opinions or answer questions about what is, what any of this stuff is. But ultimately, it's the council's decision on what's right for our community. But I will tell you that if we don't come up with something for hedges right now, whether it's us agreeing that four feet is the height in the front, and six feet or eight feet or whatever is in the back, we have dozens, if not hundreds, of hedges in the city that are out of compliance. And so it becomes very difficult for staff to enforce those codes. Every time we do, somebody from the public smartly and rightly says, I can point out 10 instances where this is happening, and my neighbor is, you know, just doing this to be angry at me, and we can't really say, you're wrong. We say, you're right, but we've got a code, and your neighbor is asking us to enforce it. So whatever we end up with, either we're going to have to enforce that new code, and we're going to have to work with the community in a way that's gentle on that and gives them a lot of information, or we're going to allow the hedge heights as they are. But we have, we do have to figure it out, because we have an untenable situation the way we are right now.
I'm okay allowing it for now, but while we work this out.
Can you repeat again?
I'm okay, I mean, in my opinion, I'm okay with holding off on enforcement and just allowing whatever.
Enforcement, so you're still holding on to enforcement?
Yeah, so just allow whatever it is for now, until we have our full discussion and make a choice, one way or the other. But I'm okay with that.
So Samantha, we need a first and second reading, then another 30 days after the second reading, then we can start enforce the new law, right? Okay, so that means that will be, we extend now, but we actually extend more time, because that will be required. We don't even have a first reading.
Well, and I, again, I, if we decide not to take it back to the planning commission, planning commission is asking us to consider additional options, and I would like staff to tell me what that means. For, you know, like I said, establishing standards for safety in the front yard. I thought we had standards already. What more standards did they want us to consider? Quality of life, aesthetics, uniformity, obstruction of views. I mean, these are things that I don't think we've really have discussed, so hopefully with our next agenda item, those things could be discussed.
I think because we even, we want a review for the wall and the fence too, right? It's that should be included, yeah.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
If I may. So when it does come back, I mean, I would like to also know if we do have the option of, from six to nine. I mean, what are the, what are the safety concerns as far as fire? I mean, are they going to have a harder time going over a nine-foot fence or nine-foot brick wall? I mean, I would also like to understand why it has been six feet for all this time. And for the most part, many of the communities that I've gone to, they've been six feet, and then they add the little vinyl fence to give a little bit more privacy. And I'm all for privacy, but I want to make sure that we're not going to make a decision of extending it up to nine feet and then have a safety, possible safety concerns.
Anyone else? So if most of my colleagues decided not to discuss tonight, then we stop tonight for this item. Then we just bring it back next time. But I hope, Mark, can you help us to maybe work with Samantha about this one and bring back something new, and they may have more question about the hedge, the safety for having a hedge, and about the hedge heights related to the fire hazard?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, but do we still need to, well, we can stop discussion today, but then we still have to decide whether we want to go to the commission or keep it among us. I'm, I'm, sorry. No, I'm just saying, I'm okay keeping it on this level, but that's my, my opinion.
Yes, I was.
I agree.
On this level, you know, council, council level. So Mark will help us out. Okay? Mark is my Google, as you remember. So we do not need any motion for this one. Okay.
Just to be clear, we have consensus among council to bring this item back to encompass all of these boundary structures, fences, walls, et cetera, and not send it back to the planning commission.
Thank you. So we have a direction now. Okay. Thank you very much. And next item, please.
Ordinance number 717, Amendment to Chapter 153 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code relating to definitions, introduction and first reading.
Is it, now I open the public hearing, planning manager, not Samantha, but, I'm sorry.
Marlon.
Marlon, yes, yes. That, Marlon's servant test, right? Will make the staff presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Wu and members of the city council. The item before you tonight is a citywide zone text amendment, ZTA 24-005, to update the San Gabriel Municipal Code relating to definitions. Section 153.003 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code provides definitions for terms used throughout the zoning code. These definitions help staff, as well as members of the public, to apply these terms consistently when considering development standards as well as permitted uses. Due to changes in housing trends, new business operations, as well as terms found elsewhere throughout the code that are not defined, staff is proposing a text amendment to improve the understanding and interpretation of zoning regulations. Prior to drafting each of these new definitions, staff created a list of terms that were not found in the definition section and surveyed nearby cities to better understand how those terms are defined in surrounding areas. Using this information, staff drafted definitions that are tailored to San Gabriel and are applicable throughout the zoning code. When coming up with a list of terms to include as part of the proposed text amendments, staff focused on those that came up most often, both at the public counter and during development application review. By establishing definitions for these terms, staff and members of the public will have clear guidance on how and when these terms apply. Each of these terms that are included as part of the zone text amendment fall broadly under one of the following three categories: residential uses, commercial uses, or development standards. A subsequent zone text amendment will also be completed to update other sections of the code where the new terms would apply. I'll hand this over to Senior Planner Christine Song to go more into detail about each of the new terms being added in the process for coming up with these new definitions.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'll be going over the new definitions that will be added to the zoning code as part of this amendment. First one being bedroom, mentioned many times throughout the zoning code, but it's not currently defined. This definition often, often comes up when reviewing new residential projects and ADUs due to the limitation in number of bedrooms allowed under certain circumstances, and also the required parking. Hedge, there is a section of the code which regulates the location and maximum height of fences, walls, and hedges, as you've seen tonight. Without a definition for hedge, it's been difficult to distinguish the difference between overgrown shrubs and mature trees, especially with regard to code enforcement cases. Instructional services, small and large, distinguishes sizes of classes for each type of business, and this would help to clarify the parking ratio requirements for those types of businesses. Lot depth, various sections of the code reference lot depth for matters such as lot coverage calculations, fire access, and subdivision requirements. So this would help clarify how lot, lot depth is identified. Lot lines, being clear on which lot lines are located where would help clarify and expedite the development review process in terms of required setbacks, orientation of new homes, new buildings, as well as location and height requirements for fences and walls on the property. For manufacturing, manufacturing light and heavy, this helps to clarify the difference between various industrial businesses and which would help streamline the review process for new businesses in the M1 zone of the city. For office, medical, and professional, again, these definitions would provide clarity in how to categorize various businesses in the various commercial zones throughout the city, as well as define parking requirements for each type of use. Primary use, currently, the zoning code does not make a distinction between primary and secondary uses, so the definition would ensure that accessory uses would remain secondary to whatever primary use is proposed for a property or a business. Retail food establishment, currently, the code requires the same parking ratio for fast-food restaurants and sit-down restaurants. But by making this distinction, fast-food and takeout-only businesses would be parked at the same ratio as retail businesses, which would be more practical in application. And lastly, greenhouse is being revised to eliminate the definition for a hoop house, which creates redundancy, because they are essentially the same thing, and hoop house might just be an outdated term. On November 18th of last year, the proposed text amendment regarding definitions was taken to the planning commission. There was minimal feedback regarding just the definition for a bedroom, and they asked that it comply with the Building Code Regulation for minimum bedroom size, and also to include a closet in the definition. And that modified definition is presented to you tonight. Ultimately, they adopted a resolution to recommend approval of the proposed ETA to the city council. The proposed Zone Text Amendment meets the following goals of the city's general plan: land use element goal 1.1, community design element goal 10.1, community design element goal 10.3, and community design element 10.4. The proposed Zone Text Amendment meets, is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to Section 15061B3, because it is covered by the common sense exemption, where it can be, can be seen that there is no possibility that the proposed amendment would have an effect on the environment. The public notice for the proposed text amendment was advertised in the San Gabriel Sun on January 9th, 2025, and the agenda was posted at City Hall, the San Gabriel Public Library, the San Gabriel Post Office, and the city's website. With that, staff's recommendation is that the city council conduct the public hearing and discuss the proposed ordinance number 717. Way full reading and introduce ordinance number 717 by title only, which is an ordinance of the city council of the City of San Gabriel, California, amending Title 15, Chapter 153 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code relating to definitions. And to waive future reading of the ordinance and to schedule the second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the next regular city council meeting. The ordinance would then become effective 30 days after the adoption. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Christine, and thank you, Marlon. Well, this is very unique. I can see something can get away from the CEQA. But, but any, does any council member have questions for our staff to clarify? No? Okay. Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
I have no speaker cards, Mayor.
No speaker card, okay. So now I close the public hearing. So it's now time for council deliberation and discussion. Who would like to go first? I see none?
I'm ready to move forward. The recommendation.
Okay, great.
But I believe council member Chen, if you have.
I'll make this real quick. I thank you to staff for your hard work and doing the definition clarifications and cleanups. I think you guys did a great job, and I have no objections, so.
Thank you so much.
No, it sounds like a second. No, it was actually very interesting, the terms. So, so thank you. I failed to say thank you. But I'd like to move the recommendation as listed. Do I need to read each one of them? Okay, staff recommendation, I like to make a motion.
Okay, a motion made by Vice Mayor Manjaka.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Chen. So please vote.
Motion passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We have no continued business, new business item A, sidewalk vending and potential regulations discussion. Planning Manager Samantha Tousart will make the presentation.
Welcome back.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you is a discussion item on sidewalk vending and proposed regulations. So in 2018 and 2022, the state passed Senate Bills 946 and 972, respectively, legalizing sidewalk vending with limited government regulations. What Senate Bill 946, sidewalk vendors, what it does, it establishes parameters for local regulations of sidewalk vendors to ensure that the local government cannot directly or indirectly ban sidewalk vending. It does allow for time, place, and manner regulations based on objective health, safety, and welfare concerns. And it requires compliance with the California Retail Food Code, such as obtaining a permit. What it also does is it prohibits cities and counties from adopting regulations that do any of the following, which is to restrict the overall number of sidewalk vendors, require sidewalk vendors to obtain consent from any non-governmental entity, require sidewalk vendors to operate within specific areas of the public right-of-way, require sidewalk vendors to operate only in designated neighborhoods. Senate Bill 946 does allow cities, again, to regulate time, place, and manner. It allows cities to limit hours of operations, as long as there are not unduly restrictive requirements to maintain sanitary conditions and requirements to comply with the Americans with Disability Act, and require sidewalk vending to obtain a permit, business license, and other California license requirements. What Senate Bill 972, enhancing sidewalk vending safety does, is it's an update. So unlike the prior Senate bill, it updates the California Retail Food Code to provide language for sidewalk food vendors. So the code did not have this language before, and what this bill does, it adds specific language to address sidewalk vending. And this is to provide more equitable regulations for sidewalk vendors and for micro entrepreneurs. It establishes legal frameworks, again, for sidewalk vending. And also, it eliminates any extra costly requirements to food vendors. However, it does provide more specific regulations related to safety handling, such as standards for cutting and chopping and, and heating of food. So the proposed, I guess, the draft regulations before the city council this evening, this is not a proposed Zone Text Amendment, but it does provide some draft language to the council to discuss and to consider. And they're proposed in the attached ordinance, such as for roaming sidewalk vendors, the hours of operations to be limited to 9:00 a.m., between 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. in areas that are exclusively residential. For sidewalk vending areas that are non-residential, to limit the operating hours from 8:00 a.m. limit the operating hours from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, for stationary vendors to not be allowed exclusively in residential areas, to prohibit vendors 500 feet away from any farmer's market or special events, and to prohibit vending one hour before and after private school, school session. And also, there are distance restrictions as well, five feet from streetlights in any street features, 15 feet from hydrants and transit stops, driveways 20 feet from another vendor, and 45 feet of an intersection. Also, the sidewalks do have to be at least nine feet or greater, and to maintain a clearance path of four feet, also for businesses to obtain a seller's permit, as well as a business license, and again, LA County Public Health Permit. So the application process proposed as part of the draft language is an application requirement, a city application requirement, also proof of a seller's permit, a public health permit, and business license. The approval will be issued by the Public Works Department with or without conditions, and also there will be a processing fee to be established as part of this application process. And so violations, what's proposed would be within the first month of implementation. It would be an education process to vendors, more of a verbal notification to educate the public on the new regulations. And then after the first month, then it would be the implementation of, of fee citations, and this is consistent with the city's current citation costs, starting at the 250, then 500, then 1,000. So the recommendation before the city council this evening, as mentioned, is for the city council to discuss the proposed draft language and to direct staff to proceed with a zone text amendment to the city's code. This would be to introduce a new chapter within the, the city's code and to direct staff to, with or without changes as presented, or to add any additional language, or to address any specific regulations consistent with the Senate Bill 946 and 972. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Sam. Does any council member have question for Samantha to clarify? Yes.
Thank you. Just want to clarify that there's no vote tonight, strictly direction. Correct. Okay. Second, we're talking about street vendors, but then we have, on page five, we talk about mobile food trucks, which have kind of taken a life of its own, especially, I mean, if this was, you know, written in 1950, well, food trucks are completely different now. Is there going to be a separate agenda item to address food trucks, just to bring it up to date? Or, because it's street vending is different from food trucks.
Correct. So it falls under the definitions as presented this evening. The city's municipal code does currently have regulations for mobile food trucks under section 72 of the city's code. However, if the council, based on council's discussion this evening, if additional regulations are warranted or direction from the council to expand on the existing regulation, then, then yes, that can be either a part of what comes back to the council or a separate discussion item specifically to, specific to mobile food trucks.
Well, let me ask you, I mean, don't we need to do more than what we have here for mobile food trucks? Because I know there's been business owners who feel that it's a nuisance for them, you know, they're not, they take up their parking lot, there's sanitation issues, and I think there needs to be a little more than just, you know, the little paragraph that was put here. I mean, what is your thought on it? Could we do better than this? Or?
Staff would have to evaluate what the potential concerns may be. What is presented before the council this evening would be to introduce regulations that are currently not in the city's code, specific to sidewalk vending. And this is, again, any roaming, stationary vendors that are specifically on the sidewalk, separate from a mobile business.
Because, for example, it says here, if nobody shows up for 10 minutes, then the vendor has to move. Well, their food truck's not going to move, you know? You have ups and downs, just like any other business. So that seemed kind of, you know, nonsense there. I mean, they're, they're not going to move, but if we don't have a code to direct them, whoever's enforcing it, I just think that needs to be updated. And again, like I said, I, I believe it is a problem with some of our business owners, because they're just planted there, and I don't, I don't know if there's, I guess there are some, I guess you can, falls under some of these guidances, but I just think the food trucks are just so popular now, it should be a separate item. But anyway, I guess we can talk more about that when we talk about the direction. But thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Samantha, you and staff did a very good job, I think, you know, coming up with all, all these kind of rules and, you know, items. Now, I did have a question. How did staff come up with these specific rules? Is there, was there maybe consultation with some of our neighbor cities and how they handle stuff?
That's correct. It's a research of ordinances from adjacent cities.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I mean, it's pretty comprehensive. I mean, addresses a lot of, lot of the issues that, that I would think need to be addressed in, in this way. But, okay, that's just my question for you for now. So thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Councilmember Chen. Anyone else? Yes.
So what I would like to see is a more, a more detailed approach on how, if we do decide to allow the, the vendors to go out on the sidewalks, how, if we could, how to check for health-related issues, like they're out in the open, nothing from stopping them from having all kinds of debris in the food, and I've heard so many horror stories of, I've heard stories on both sides. Some of this food's good, some of this food gets them sick. So how do we protect our, the residents, and how do we check up on these vendors? And that's one thing. And then as far as the permit goes, how much are we looking to charge for the permit process? I mean, is it going to be a couple hundred dollars? I mean, the last thing that I want is for us to, to go ahead and approve this, and then now we have a influx of vendors taking over the streets. Because we already have a lot of vendors, and then the food trucks, too, and I've heard both sides. Biggest thing is keeping the sidewalks clean, obstructions, and so on and so forth. So those are going to be my two concerns for now.
Right. So as to health and safety requirements, what this ordinance would do, it would provide the city with local regulations that would require the health department approval, as well as business licensing, and so the health department plays a vital role in making sure that these vendors meet these requirements, and it will be a part of the city's application process to make sure that they do have these permits first, before the city issues its approval. As to the potential application fee, typically, the starting point would be cost recovery for staff time spent reviewing an application, so that would be the starting point for establishing the fee. That will be presented to the city council, and the city council can determine whether it's, it's high or low at that point in time.
And the last question, as far as enforcement goes, I mean, for the most part, I see them setting up after hours when everybody's gone. Are we going to consider, are we going to consider having somebody out there enforcing after hours, or is that going to be taken into consideration as well?
That is something that staff will have to evaluate.
Because I really think we should. I really think we should, because they're going to, this is our city, it's not the vendor city, but people from the city, I've talked to both sides. Some people love it, some people don't. Some vendors are very clean, some, some are not. Some food is really good, some food gets you sick. I don't know which one. I've tried it before, very, very, some of it very delicious. I have got, I haven't gotten sick yet, but it's still, it's money that's, that we're losing, revenue that we're losing if they're setting up if, because right now, I mean, is, it's, it's illegal to be in the, is it illegal right now, what they're doing?
Yes and no. California law allows them, and our regulations don't have a lot of teeth to fixing it, but they are required to have a business license and a health department permit, and I submit that a lot of them don't. We have done sweeps with the health department twice in the last two weeks, and caught very many that didn't have even just the, the health department permit. So they are not legal in that regard, but we can enforce much more than that right now.
Right. And then, on, on, on top of that, the revenue that we're getting, most of these places take cash, most of these places, they, they're very advanced, they take the app and all that. How are we securing that money, too, all that revenue that's going? I see some of these vendors, they have huge lines, huge followings, and people come to San Gabriel just to come and eat there. So, I mean, just really want to understand how we're going to capture that money as well. It's not a free ride here in San Gabriel. We have to look out for, for our city first, and where that money is going to as well. Thank you. I yield.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember.
Clarify the question.
Yes.
So, like, as the vice mayor mentioned, so, street vendor and the mobile food truck, it's different category?
That's correct. This is vending specifically on the sidewalk area.
So even we're talking about a food truck, is our discussion, one of our discussion two, or not?
It can be a part of council discussion. This is a part of council's discussion item and further direction to staff.
Okay. So if a discussion, so we should be include a food truck or not, same as it's today's discussion, too, right?
I think we can, because today we are just discussion, we are not going to do any motion.
Yeah, but a discussion, it's.
You can include that. Yeah.
We don't need a vote, right?
No.
Yeah, so we just want to discuss the direction, when you want to include a food truck, too, right? Okay. Yeah, that's my clarifying question. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. So, well, thank you very much, Samantha. I think this, this, this is a long, like, for almost, I would say, maybe almost a year that it been bothering our community, that I got a lot of complaints, but I, you know, with this, I have reviewed the SB 946, and it seems like this bill has limited our power to regulate those food vendors. And really unfortunate that I seen there's no sunset clause, even that is happening in 2018. And also, this bill mandate the dismissal of criminal persecution under any local ordinance or resolution relating, regulating or prohibiting the sidewalk vendors. So in this case, I mean, we, what we have seen today that you proposed, those are under the guidelines of the SB 946.
That's correct.
Okay. And so also, the sidewalk vendors, vending provides important, they, you know, there is a one section, section one of this bill, it says, the sidewalk vending provides important entrepreneurship and economic development opportunity for low-income and immigrant communities. So it said that any, have you seen anything that, who is verifying the vendors qualify for as low-income individuals?
No, we have not.
Yeah, because I'm so jealous, they use the, they, they, can you believe that? They use the cyber truck to be their, like, kitchen countertop. So that's a very luxury way to handle the food without washing hands. But, so according to the SB 946, each applicant for sidewalk vendor's permit is required, so we are also able to require those vendors to, to provide us the proof of.
That's correct.
And also business permit as well. And so, so who is issuing the certificate?
That would be under the Public Works Department.
Public Works. So with that, with or without any condition?
That would depend on the application and the vendor.
And usually, if we issue the certificate, how long is the certificate valid?
For one year.
One year. I see. So any of the, the regulations that you, if they violate those regulations, we can give them citation. Is that correct? Any one items they are not following. For example, they have a house permit, but they don't have business permit, we still can give them citation.
That would make it non-compliant.
I see. And for the amount of violation and the penalties, is that just a suggestion amount, or are we able to increase that?
It says recommended.
It's recommended, yeah. Usually, people will need to bring at least $250 per person to enjoy the food there. So I don't see there's, this is a good amount, but thank you so much for the, for the report. So Chief City Cur, do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay. So now it's time for council discussion. Okay, who would like to go first? Yes, Councilmember Chen.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, with this kind of issue, you know, I look at, I mean, I can, I speak for myself, but I hope I also speak for my colleagues, that one of the biggest responsibilities that we have as council members is to try to be fair to all the residents and the businesses of our city. And unfortunately, the, this kind of, well, the SB rules that the state hands down, and we can't really do much about, that it, it doesn't sit right with me, because it seems like, you know, that you have brick and mortar businesses on the streets, you know, that, that pay rent and whatever, and, and they do things correctly, and it just doesn't seem right that these vendors can just be out on, just post up on the sidewalk anywhere. But again, that's something that the state told us that we, we have to tolerate, which, but that being said, I'm glad that the staff put together at least some guidelines and some rules regarding what we can affect, and what rules we can enforce, to at least give them some kind of guideline, so it's not just willy-nilly out there. I think my colleague, Councilman Herrera, would also agree, that, you know, it's, it just doesn't seem right, but, but I'm glad that staff came up with some rules and, and regulation, whatever regulations that we can enforce. So I'm, I'm pretty happy with the, most of the, the parameters that we're coming up with. So, and I'll yield and listen to my colleagues in terms of how we want to handle this.
Thank you, Councilmember Chen. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so page four, you have roaming sidewalk vendors are limited to the operating hours of 9 to 6, that are exclusively residential. And then you have, so I'm going to go back to that, mixed use, non-residential. Are you allowed to have roaming sidewalk vendors for non-residential also? Because the next item says sidewalk vending hours in areas zone for non-residential, which is mixed use, it's limited to 8 to 8:00 PM, but it doesn't say roaming. Am I reading that correctly? It's bullet point one and then two, or doesn't have one and two, but the first two bullet points. I was trying to understand why residential can have roaming, but non-residential, which is mixed use, doesn't mention roaming. What happens to them?
Sorry, Vice Mayor, can we work off of page 11? Page four is a summary itself, but page 11 is the proposed regulations.
A and B?
Yes.
Okay.
So sidewalk vending hours in non-residential zones, 8 to 8, so those are a little bit less restrictive than residential zones. Again, mixed use projects typically fall within the, the non-residential zones and areas. Roaming sidewalk vending in exclusively in residential areas is 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, which again, is, is more restrictive. And then stationary sidewalk vending is prohibited during any times.
So, so again, we can't have roaming sidewalk vending and non-residential? Is that what you're saying? It doesn't say roaming for the non-residential. It only says it for residential.
Right. I think it's just to be very specific to those areas, and, and yes, it's, it's not specific to the non-residential, so.
I think it's because in non-residential, there's no exclusion for stationary vendors, so they're just, it's a catch-all. All vendors.
Are roaming.
Well, they can.
Well, they can be stationary or roaming in non-commercial, I mean, in commercial or non-residential zones. So sidewalk vending under A encompasses both roaming and.
Stationary. Okay, for non-residential, okay. It's a little confusing, but okay, I understand. Bullet point three, I'll go back to four. It talks about stationary sidewalk vendors are not allowed in areas exclusively residential. So I mean, I'm thinking a particular corner where I see the sidewalk vendor every day at a person's home. And the person, and the homeowner told me, well, we gave him permission, he can be there. But this is saying that they're not allowed. I guess, is stationary sidewalk vendors mean that their little cart or whatever it is, is there permanently? Or, I mean, they pack it up every day, and then they put it back the next day? That's not considered stationary?
No, station, roaming, roaming is, roaming is when it's a cart and there's movement. Stationary is when it is just there at an exact location without any movement. And plus, the approval is on city property, city right-of-way. So although an owner may not express concerns, it's not something that's privately granted to a vendor.
I describe stationary, okay, because I'm, I don't, I'm trying to remember, I'm trying to think, what corner do we have permanent stationary sidewalk vendors? I mean, they always pack up and leave. I mean, it's clean the next day, then they bring it back again. I mean, do we have any permanent vendor sites?
Well, permanent as in there 24 hours, no. But the difference between roaming and stationary is no movement during operating times.
Oh, during operating, okay.
Like when they set up a grill, like, and it's there, they're not walking around. Like the taco places that have elaborate grills, but they're there for at least a few hours, and then they pack up, but that's still stationary, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, okay. I didn't understand that part.
Oh, like.
Wait a minute.
Ice car.
Vice Mayor finished?
For example, the roaming is like ice cream, they're moving, it's roaming.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Like the popsicles.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that. Next thing is, there was a comment, I'm trying to find where I saw it, where you talk about signs and creating flyers to give to the street vendors. I read that somewhere, I can't find it now. When you create these signs or these flyers, do you do it in multiple languages?
That is the intent, yes.
Okay, so if we approve this, then that would be the intent. But I think we also need to give it to residents, because I get that question all the time. You know, well, what are the rules? And, you know, we go through the process and, you know, email them and send them the rules. But I think this needs to be prominently displayed, maybe it is already, but on the website. Because this is a question I get all the time, and I know it's frustrating, as Councilmember Chan said, you know, we are, California has taken local control from our cities, so we have these parameters. And I think a lot of residents just don't understand that. They think, you know, we can, we have all this control, but we really don't, because we have these parameters. So I would recommend having this prominently displayed somewhere on our website. So just so everyone has equal access, even, maybe even doing a social media post. But just everyone at least is, has an understanding. You may not agree, but at least have an understanding. On the bottom of page four, it says, "Once all the requirements are satisfied, the Public Works Department will issue a certificate with or without conditions." Now, why is it not the Economic Development Department? Because the Economic Development Department is responsible for enforcement. Shouldn't they also be responsible for issuing the certificate?
That would be up to council's direction and to staff, which department oversees the program. Since it's public right-of-way, it's important that the Public Works Department is informed of it, as well as the Police Department, that they're aware of what's going on in city right-of-way and city property. However, as far as processing the application or ultimately issuing the approvals, that is up to council direction.
I don't, I mean, I don't know what the right answer is, maybe Mark could help out. It just seems Public Works, of all people, to be issuing certificates on street vendors when it seems like everything else is going through economic development. Maybe you can shed some light, Mark?
I'd be happy to, and we can look at this internally once we figure out what the regulations are, where it belongs for the permit process. Enforcement's going to be done with a combination of code enforcement and our Police Department.
Yeah, that I understand.
But the actual permits, we'll figure out what department is most heavily involved. And if it needs to be all departments, we can have it come from Economic Development as a way to ferry that through.
I mean, I don't know what kind of staffing you need, but Public Works, it just has a whole different focus from street vendors. I can see maybe cleaning up after them. But to actually issue the certificate, it just doesn't seem like it's their lane. It doesn't make sense to me, but I like that to be looked at a little closer.
Has Public Works been talking to you about that?
No, they haven't. I'm just watching over them, not that they don't have Greg.
So, yeah, for your question, so maybe I think, for the, yeah, certificate from the economic, yeah, I agree. But we still can require certificate from Public Works for the safety purpose. You know, same to the, like, you apply the business license, they file department, they require a certificate too, right? After then, then we can issue the business license too, that's my understanding. Maybe the same.
Well, there's usually like a checklist, and then you go through, every department goes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the end, someone looks at it, some department reviews it and says, okay.
Yeah.
They've met compliance, Health Department. But again, I just, it doesn't seem to make sense. Maybe the, maybe I need to see the visual, but.
Okay, yeah, that's my suggestion, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that is good. And then the warning, you know, it says here, "There's there immediate danger associated with the sidewalk vendor conduct. It is staff's intent to allow all sidewalk vendors violating the ordinance, a verbal warning." And so who provides that verbal warning? Is it the police? Is it Public Works? Is it Economic Development? Who provides this verbal warning?
It would be neighborhood improvement.
Okay, so back to Economic Development. Okay, and the only time Public Works and the Police Department get involved is if it's a hazard, or there's some criminal.
Safety concern.
Safety concern, and maybe some criminal activity and all that. Okay. Okay, well, I know it's just direction, but those are just some of my concerns that I'd like to have considered, addressed. And back to the food trucks, I think we need something separate for the food trucks. Thank you.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor, yes.
If I may, I think we need to have a clear definition on street vendors as far as the stationary, and then the roaming, and then hot food versus like just the person that I buy oranges from over there on, by San Gabriel Boulevard. I mean, I don't think it would be, I think we have to have a clear definition. And I think that we need to have different, if we're going to start charging people for their license, I think it's going to be, it should be based on how much money they bring in. Right, I don't think the guy selling the oranges brings in that much money, or the lady that's over there by San Gabriel High School is making tons of money like that opposed from the people that are selling actual food.
So as a starting point, on page eight of the proposed regulations, staff did carry over definitions that's provided by the state law. However, the council would like to expand on those definitions, we can do that.
For me, I would like hot food versus the, like the fruits.
Yes. And what differentiation are you drawing between hot food and fruit?
Right, because if we start saying, okay, we're going to charge anybody that's a vendor on the sidewalk, and we're going to start, they have to go through the process, and they have to get a license. I just don't want to create any, that much hardship on somebody that's not making that much money in our streets, if they go through the process, and if they're willing to go through the process.
So you're talking about the amount of the permit, the cost of the permit? Okay, well, that's up to the council.
I just think we start getting into that level of detail, it can get very complicated. Because then you can look at businesses too. I mean, a business license is a business license. And that orange guy makes a lot of money, don't let him fool you. He is very popular. I want him to come to our farmer's market. I actually tried, and he wasn't interested, because that business of his is very lucrative. So I would disagree with that, because then it just becomes a hardship on staff to have to differentiate between all the different vendors and what they sell, you know, one price, and, you know, I mean, how do we even, like I said, I know he makes a lot of money. It doesn't look like it, but he does, he does very well, so anyway.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Ding?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Samantha. Finally, we discussed this issue. I think we, the last couple years, we already see the mobile food truck and the street vendor, it's really grown up in our city. Actually, just last week, I come back to 10th Freeway and go to the San Gabriel Boulevard, and on the San Gabriel Superstore, I saw five food truck, plus one street vendor. It's still like cooking the food, too. That's meaning they have a good business. It's a lot of the people willing coming to. So we really needed something to regulate, because even like, like I have a chance to talk to the resident, they are really also, some people, they really work for the, like, public service, they worry about our safety, for also the city liability too, if we don't do anything, you know. So it's, I'm glad we staffed bringing back to that one. So for your proposed, some, like, we, on the number, page four, regarding the sidewalk vending, if a food truck is still A to A, I think it's definitely a limit to them, you know. Even, I think that they, I almost, almost 11 o'clock, okay, they still have the food truck over there. So if you put on a, like, 8:00 PM, I don't know if, we can do that, right? So for the city, we have right to limit them to, right? But I think it would be reduce them to coming to. So see what's our, where the council member wanted to do that, right?
That's why I said food trucks should be different, because the reality with food trucks, I mean, they really cater later, you know, the late crowd.
How about the side vending, it's for the, they're not food trucks, but they cook the food.
Right, so sidewalk vending is not vehicles.
Not a vehicle, yeah, but if we separate that, so they, after A, 8:00 PM, no more, that kind of business.
That's tough on enforcement, it would primarily fall on the Police Department.
If we separate these two category?
If time restrictions are set on food trucks.
Yeah, time restriction, okay. The restriction for the food truck and a sidewalk vendor too, or?
The current proposed language applies to sidewalk vendors.
Not for the food truck?
Not food trucks. Food trucks, the current regulation.
But if not a food truck, like, they use the sidewalk, still cook?
That's correct, right. If not a mobile business, then it is a vendor on the sidewalk.
So for your discipline regulations, so would be eliminate their time, right? It's until A, 8:00 PM, no more.
For sidewalk vendors.
Yeah, if they do the.
Non-residential areas, yes.
Right, even they provide food, like I say this, I saw the one, it's not a food truck. Yeah, so, okay. I just want to clarify this one, and for the violation, so like, maybe, I don't know how much is reasonable, right? The question, if they consistent, it's not complying our, the code. So what is the way to, we don't have this kind of, that kind of vendor, we should be eliminated to their business? Can we do that too, or not?
I think we can persecute that. That's my question, yeah.
Can we eliminate what kind of business?
If they consistent to violate the code, yeah.
There are provisions for revoking the permit if it's a habitual offender that continues to violate. So yes, the answer is yes.
We can do that.
We can revoke a permit of a habitual offender under the state law.
Okay, so maybe we can think about that. Otherwise, if they're doing good business, for example, you say a third violation, it's $1,000, for them, probably, probably they will be paid for it, because if they have the good business. So if we can have some setup guideline, so if you always do that, so we should be, stop them to the business in our city, you know, right? So I just bring out for our council colleague to think about that too. You know, maybe we can think about, okay, maybe within one year or within two years, you no more business in our city, right? Yeah, and a city license, based on current street vendor, how much will be charged, if they apply? They should be have the, even current, they do business in our city, they should be have the business license too, right?
That's correct.
How much we usually charge them?
I don't have that fee in front of me.
Okay. So, like, another question is like, the mayor to bring out, okay. The street vendor, they want, like, it's a low income, right? So who enforce it? Is our city enforce it, and/or it's like county, public health, they enforce it? Who did the enforcement to, if they make sure they are low income?
Yes, not to speak on behalf of the mayor, but the mayor had brought it up in terms of the introductory paragraph within the Senate bill, and the reasoning behind the law.
The law itself does not limit the operators to be low income.
Okay.
The preamble in the bill simply states that there are a lot of people that are of low income that are making a living this way. Therefore, we're going to.
Yes, okay, they actually.
Apply certain regulations that prevent the cities from over-regulating.
Okay.
For the Senate one, yeah.
So actually, the bill, the bill itself, the cosmetically, they say want to help the low-income people, but actually it's not.
And immigrants.
Even your entrepreneur, you still can have the, like, you have companies say, I hire a lot of people to the street vendor too, right?
It's also another way of supporting the argument, this is a matter of statewide concern, and therefore, any financial burden on the city is not being covered by the state.
Okay, great, thank you. And another question, it's like a sales tax. I think I asked you this question before. How can we know they pay the sales tax for our city of San Gabriel?
Yes, it was a question that was also asked by Councilmember Herrera. That's something that we would, that staff would have to evaluate and see.
So if, because they have a business, they should be apply business license? So every, like, quarterly, we receive the sales tax? So we can see that, how much they pay for it?
Yes, Councilmember Ding, one of the requirements is to apply for a retail.
Yes, Councilman Ding, one of the requirements is to apply for a retail seller's permit to the state, which is the mechanism the state uses to collect sales taxes. Just because it's a cash business, I think we have several restaurants, for example, that only accept cash. We have a vendor called HDL that does our audits for us and looks at businesses to make sure that they're paying their fair share. It will be very difficult to do that for these food vendors because they're going to be such a small amount, but I would suggest that if they're willing to go through the process of getting a health department permit, a business license and a seller's permit, they're going to be a lot more likely to properly turn in sales tax than the rogue vendors that we're seeing in the city right now. There's probably very little chance that they're doing any of that correctly.
Okay.
So there was no way anybody can guarantee you that we're going to be getting all of our sales tax, but we have a higher likelihood by establishing a process and holding folks accountable to that process.
Okay, so currently, we didn't asking the resale permit?
Correct.
Okay, just asking the business license in our city. Currently, we enforce them that too or?
Paradically, very sporadically.
Any business that conducts business within San Gabriel is required to obtain a business license.
Okay, and the last question, it's regarding the insurance. Because they use the public, the street, so I want to see how can we protect our city? If just in case they doing, therefore, and it caused the producer, people to walk through, they got hurt, got like some accident, so we asking them, currently, we asking them the insurance or no? No?
No.
So after you do the direction, so we be put on this condition too, right? We should be asking the insurance. I don't, yeah, we don't want to like our insurance going up because they are, they are problem, you know? Yeah.
Thank you Mayor. We can look at that aspect of it and it's obviously a very good idea. State prohibits us from overregulating or making the regulations too prohibitive or too limiting and we'll take a deeper dive and take a look at whether or not that's being done anywhere or whether that would be, but the limitation in this type of thing would be exactly that and trying to require somebody to carry a liability insurance to vend on the sidewalk would probably be deemed to be overregulating. But we'll look at it and we'll come back to the council when the ordinance comes back.
Okay, but if even we not afford a council member, even for the like just the resident, I feel we should not like take a risk because they do the business and it costs the city money too. It's our city, the resident pay the tax money to help them, right? So I think it should be, the certificate insurance should be reasonable, you know? Yeah, so, okay, that's my last question, thank you.
Mayor, if I may? So currently, I know it was already stated, so currently, right now, who's enforcing? If we do pass this new law ordinance, who's enforcing it?
It would be neighborhood improvement.
At what time are they off?
City Hall closes at 5 o'clock.
Except for Friday, right? Some Fridays off early? Saturdays and Sundays, city works?
Not neighborhood improvement.
Okay, so you said 5 o'clock, right? Fridays, I know there are some are off. So who's enforcing this? If we pass this, who's going to enforce it or how is it going to even get enforced?
Councilman Herrera Abula, for those kind of instances, and we have those all over the city, we put together special enforcements. So we have our code officers change their hours. So for example, even though they're, they're closed at 5, the other night, we did an enforcement and we had everybody show up at 6:00 PM and they worked from 6:00 to 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock at night. We did it in conjunction with the health department and we bring PD in and so we'll do those enforcements. So don't let the fact that code works, you know, 8:00 to 5:00 or whatever those hours are, as those are the limits of our enforcement. The other thing is, is when we have a process and we have a permit and they have to display that, it'll be much easier for our police department to enforce those at night when code is off duty because it's a very yes or no question. Do you have this or do you not have this? And they can do that enforcement as well. But the majority of it, as Samantha said, will be done by code and if we need to have, we have had part-time code officers in the past that have worked weekends and if we have to adjust folks' hours to be working at 6:00 PM so that somebody gets off at 8:00 every night, then that's what we would have to do to make it work, but don't let the current hours.
Right, how does staff feel about that? Having those, having to work late nights once in a while?
That's a discussion that has not been had yet. But I mean, what staff would have to say is it depends on the education process and really the initial implementation of the program, educating the vendors and really seeing compliance and non-compliance in order to determine adjustment of ours.
Right, and I like the fact that we're gonna, we will take approach of educating first, right? Through different means, like councilmember Menchaca mentioned, social media and all that, before we start going full-fledged. But we need to have a plan of how we're gonna enforce and it cannot be a plan per se where they know that we're gonna be out enforcing because they're just gonna pack up and go on those days. So, I mean, PD already, if they're supporting, I mean, I'm pretty sure that they're already, like overtime for them is pretty up the roof. So it is a little bit of a challenge and we have to consider everybody's work-life balance and all that too, but at the same time, we have a city and we have laws and we have rules and regulations and we have to do what's best for the residents. So I just want to make sure that if we do this, that we enforce as well because then if we don't and we say we're gonna enforce, then it goes back to like the hedges, right? We're not really enforcing, right? And for some people, that's good, for some people, that's bad and we're gonna have people on both sides of the aisle. So just something to consider.
Okay, well, thank you so much for all my colleagues and I'm going to share some of my thought. Well, first of all, Samantha, I wonder is, because today we are just discussing and we will not motion to move or something, but are we going to have an ordinance for this?
Yes, an ordinance is a requirement and this is not a land use ordinance, so it would come to city council and does not require planning commission.
Do we need to go through one, first reading, second reading and another 30 days? So we should be said, for the day then when we are able to use the codes, what about the days before that? Are we able to do the enforcements without a new ordinance adopted? Yes, Martin?
Adoption of this ordinance would put the city's code in compliance with the existing state law.
It's existing state law.
So the current regulations of any are not reflective of the new law, therefore, really cannot be enforced.
Really cannot be enforced, so that means they will still have like a happy few months before we can actually enforce it. Even we will have, you know, the penalties, they will be starting effective, that will be so many days from even today. So, but at least, this is good, we have a progress. And Samantha, do you have a chance that, do you have any social media, like we call the small book, like a small book note or something? You don't, right? Actually, this is just for entertaining purpose because I've seen that all the time. When you type the Chinese San Gabriel, in that search engine, you can find 80% of the short reel video, it's about the night market. And they will say, you know what? I'm here tonight, I will have a big squeeze tonight and that is how much I, or people were just showing that how they cook and they have like a big, like a celebrity, like the ring camera or something and they just do it live. I really appreciate it, our city, we have twice that to have our PD and including the health department from county, but the first night was the night we had sinana wings, so we didn't really get that many, but second time we had that. So does that mean always, we always need the health department from county in order to enforce the code or is not necessarily? Because last time where we had the county staff, they came and with their uniform, they shows the public health. So that means they are going to, you know, give them a citation or something from their end. So what about ours? Our PD or public works or NIS, are they able to give them the citation for non-compliance of the health permit requirements? Yes, Martin?
Thank you Mayor. First of all, and I'll come right back to you, just to clarify, I looked over the ordinance. Right now, as it is, it is, it proposes to have a certificate of insurance as part of the requirement. So we'll take a look at that and, but it addresses the question that you, that you asked. With regard to the, our ability to cite for health violation, that is an area that is governed by the county, county issues and policies, any health-related food preparation, that type of regulations. So we would not be the sanctioning authority to issue any citations in that area.
So if they do not have house permit, we cannot really give them citation, even this is in our.
They don't have a health permit, they're operating illegally, we cannot enforce the conditions of the health permit. In other words, if they have a health permit and are not operating in compliance with it, that is a county jurisdiction.
I see, okay. Thank you so much for clarification. And also, I think my, another concern is about pedestrians' safety. I think we talked not only about the street food vendors, but also the food trucks, of course, because for the corner that you mentioned about valley and San Gabriel Boulevard, that it will be so hard to drive out when they have all the food trucks parking there. And actually, there was so, one person that has been hit by cars and I think he just passed away because of that. That really creates the issue about the insurance because we as a city may not be doing a good jobs on enforcing that, even we have no way to enforce without the codes or because the state is protecting them. And also, public health, I do get a lot of complaints and also I think Mark and I, we both got an email from some of people who has purchased the food there and got diarrhea, got really sick and they said, oh, they tried to get some, to argue with the food truck vendors and they said, it's nothing to do with this. So all the things like this, but people, they do got sick. That's why I have a big concern about if, before we can actually make this active, you know, and have our law enforcement or code enforcement to do something, people were still suffering from the, you know, they will be still at risk of the health. So that's another things, I don't know if we are able to stop them by like a no more parking here or, I mean, what is other option, any other options that we can stop them from doing this before we even have this adopted? Anyone can answer?
Currently, I think the code addresses that under 72.012, no person shall stand or park any vehicle, wagon or pushcart from which goods, wares and merchandise, et cetera, are sold, displayed or offered. On any portion of any street within the city except that such vehicles, wagons and pushcart may stand and park only at a request of bona fide purchaser for a period of time not to exceed 10 minutes at any parking place.
So 10 minutes parking place, right?
They don't have people show up for 10 minutes.
Right.
They have to move. That's why we need to update.
Yeah, they can hire people to, you know, their family members. Okay, and also about the, the food trucks, I have the video that shows the food truck, they released the water, the wasted water on the street. So that is something, it's a different violation codes, right? Because they are not conducting the business, they are not really handling those wastewater properly. Do we have those different penalties for those kind of unethical business behavior?
Any discharges of hazardous substances or pollutants of grease onto a city street is a violation and violation.
We can enforce that.
We can, right?
Yeah.
Good. And I think, so I think that that's a pretty clear, that we would like to have something to stop the street vendors. And also, I think that one law should apply all. We cannot discriminate because someone is having different income and also if they are serving the cold food, people will start serving sushi because it's cold. But I think the violation and penalties that is, cannot reflect the current market. I mean, you know, that will not scare them away and actually, I think Councilmember Ding has brought up a good issues about, what about after $1,000? Is there a fourth time, then they will come back with $250? Because first violation, $250, second, $500 and third time is $1,000. So can we just like do like a double again, a double again? Yes?
There are two options, you can continue to fine at the maximum amount and the maximum amount is set actually in observance of the fact that anything over that becomes a misdemeanor and becomes a criminal prosecution and we're not allowed to criminally prosecute.
We're not allowed.
The street vendors under state law. But after the fourth violation, the public works director or whoever is going to be administering the permits, has by state law the ability to revoke that permit.
Revoke?
Yeah, we talked a little bit about that. So if they're a continuous and habitual offender, we do have the authority to revoke the permit, basically stop them from operating.
Got it. So that will be happen after we have adopted new ordinance because now they have only traffic license, right? But they have only traffic license now. We cannot revoke their license. So I think my, I would say my conclusion is our city council, we have the same directions that we would like to make this moving forward. And I don't know if my colleagues will agree that we should increase the penalties especially, it's not the third time is like stopping points, it should be continuing with the maximum, the fourth, five, the fifth times, you violate that again, you come back again without a proper permit and license, we still charge you $1,000 every single time. So if we are able to do it, I think probably Samantha can bring back that's more completed package of the enforcement. And I agree with my colleagues about, we need more labor force that able to, you know, to enforce the codes. In the morning, from noon to afternoon, 6 o'clock, usually they have food, the produce vendors, they have, you know, selling the, you know, vegetable, fruits, groceries and after 6:00, they was, you know, they just, you know, switch the time and start the food trucks, then the food vendors. So that is how the business started and I hope that we can just get this done as soon as possible. Do you think that maybe next council meeting that we can hear something from you? I'm sorry, but I think that we.
It's highly likely, I mean, the majority of the language is presented before the council this evening, it's just additional research into some of the fees, if that's to be a part of the council's consideration or it can be a separate item, but those are the areas that would require the additional analysis. But as far as the regulations, the majority of it is presented.
So what about the parking safety? I mean, for the food trucks or the produce, like people with a truck, a whole truck of the orange, they usually block the, you know, the views for, you know, incoming traffic. So are we able to do something from traffic law? Because that is maybe nothing to do with the food preparing things, but. Because that is maybe nothing to do with the, the food preparing things, but they still blocked the view for those drivers who is existing, you know, from the parking lot.
Mayor Wu, rather than give a shooting from the hip answer, I'd rather have staff and City Attorney's Office look and see what we can provide for distance requirements for food trucks. I've seen some cities that have that in their permit, but we'll have to come back to you with a complete answer on that.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So anything else? Yes, Vice Mayor?
I was just gonna ask, I'm not sure if it goes in the ordinance, but I think it is important to say, you know, if it's, if you got sick from the food, who do you call? You have to call the Health Department, kind of like, kind of like what we've done with, with the wildfires, you know, you have, if this is the issue, this is who you call, and then so on and so on. Because I think there is some confusion that, you know, if you, if the food isn't good or you got sick, we really don't have that authority to, and again, I'm not sure it's part of the ordinance or be part of this flyer, but we do need to, part of the education process is that our hands are tied in many, many ways, but in some ways, for example, the violation, we do that. So it would be helpful to have something like that, but again, I'm not sure if it's part of the ordinance, but-
I see. So maybe staff can bring it back. Yes, Consumer Everything?
Yeah, I hear your idea, but, but for the, for the resolution, I, I don't think that you can put on this kind of warning-
Yeah.
-because of just for the advertising, because the, the department phone number, everything, they change all the time, you know? So, yeah, I, I echo the, the mayor, the, if for reason situation, what we can do the enforcement? For example, can we check that they have the resale permit? I think that's the first one. Maybe we can, can we enforce that too, or not?
You mean before we actually have this-
Yeah, yeah.
-adopted, right?
Can we, can we do that? I should, I think if they do the reseller, we should be asking them the resale permit too, right?
Can we give them any citation if-
Because they do the business license with us, so can we asking? That's the question for, for the City Attorney, or for the-
It's a tough night.
Every business in the city is required to have a business license, so operating without a business license is, is a violation, and they can be cited for that.
Yeah, if they have a business license, but they don't, they don't have the resale permit, can we enforce that too, or not?
I think that enforcement of that would be better served once the ordinance is adopted.
If it's not adopted, we, currently, we can do, we cannot do that? I don't think so.
Well, for a, this is an assumption, because I'm, I'm not under the business licensing division, but it's the assumption that as part of obtaining a city business license, that certain state documentation is required, such as seller's permits, or tax ID, or a series of other state documents is required by business licensing. But again, because we're not a part of the intake of those documents, I cannot confirm that absolutely.
So, so city, you mean, the city cannot enforce the resale permit asking?
As in, typically, that would be a part of the business licensing process.
Okay, okay. I, I understand it, because I do the resale a long times ago, so, but the requirement from the board equalization, they can enforce it, right?
Let's have the staff bring it back. I mean, that is what part of the consideration, about that.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Samantha. It's a long, long, long time for you, I'm so sorry. Right. Actually, before we move on, let's take a ten minutes break?
Yeah.
House break? Okay, so that's a break. Uh, let's come back with a, wait, do we miss it? Let's come back for the public comments, how about that? Thank you.
We have an emergency.
Yes, we do, we do.
There's no public comments here, right? Oh, no, actually, I asked already.
You've already asked.
Already asked, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
After nine o'clock, things start flowing out.
Okay, meeting resume at nine sixteen P. M. Next item, please.
Resolution number twenty-five dash zero five ratifying the proclamation of the Director of Emergency Services concerning the existence of a local emergency for the January twenty-twenty-five wind and fire event. Fire Chief Wallace will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Steve Wallace, Fire Chief for the City of San Gabriel. I'd like to first thank you for adding this to the last minute tonight. This is an important item. Given the hour, I will try to make this very brief and concise. I did offer to Samantha since she's been up here all night long, and it seemed to have a good rapport going, but she respectfully declined presenting this one. A little history and a little background and sort of a timeline of how we got to where we are today. As you'll remember, on Tuesday, January seventh, the National Weather Service had been predicting particularly dangerous wind situation and red flag warnings for several days prior to this event. What was a little different is they also said it was going to include a mountain wave, which, when you hear that, that generally impacts the San Gabriel Valley. Fire departments had been planning for about a week in the region to augment staffing and add additional resources in anticipation of the high winds and the conditions, and this was all based on lessons we learned back in twenty-eleven with the wind event. We also had a number of strike teams prepositioned across the San Gabriel Valley. San Gabriel Fire Department had augmented staffing, filling every position for every day, staffed an extra engine, and then added one of our utility trucks with two extra firefighters on it that could be a resource to go investigate down trees, down wires, and stuff like that, leaving ambulances and fire apparatus for more high acuity calls. At ten thirty-eight in the morning on Tuesday, the seventh, the Palisades Fire was reported, and we know what's happened since then. The first arriving resources there reported a very fast-moving fire with explosive growth, and within fifteen minutes, neighborhoods were burning down. One prepositioned strike team from Verdugo with Chief Hong as the leader was dispatched to that incident with immediate need. In honor of rival, Chief Hong was given the responsibility of everything on Sunset Boulevard down to the ocean between Temescal Canyon and Chautauqua. So, right in the heart of the Palisades was his area of responsibility. And I can tell you, I got a couple panicked phone calls from him saying, "I've never seen anything like this. We can't hold the line. We're losing all the houses and structures." At about five minutes after three, Verdugo Fire Agencies in the Verdugo, in the San Gabriel Valley began to experience significant increase in calls for service for trees down, wires down, and vegetation fires generally from the wires down. The dispatch center was now receiving two times its normal nine-one-one call volume and moved to what's called a Level B operation from their normal operations, and at that point, they limit the voice dispatches, and most everything is done on the mobile computers back and forth, allowing dispatchers to get information out and answer phone calls. At that point, I alerted our city staff, Fire Police, Public Works, and Administration that we may be looking at an EOC activation. At four-thirty, Verdugo was receiving four times its normal call volume with numerous vegetation fires reported all over the Southern California region. Engine fifty-two from our city at this point was now moving fire to fire to fire to fire, especially in the county areas, unincorporated county assisting L.A. County with numerous roof fires and vegetation fires. At this point, San Marino was beginning spot fires from a bigger fire in Los Angeles County that was located behind the Sunny Slope Water District Building, just above Sunny Slope and Highland, and South Pasadena experienced what's a major brush fire for that city in some of their brush areas along the border on their west side of the city with Los Angeles Fire Department. By five P. M., we made the call to open the EOC. At that point, the Fire Command Staff, a police captain, Public Works, and the City Manager were alerted and headed to the EOC building so we could monitor the city conditions and coordinate responses to the incidents. Verdugo Dispatch at this point went to a Level C, which is an emergency mode, where at that point, they are answering calls and then distributing calls to each city for each city to triage and dispatch on their own. At that point, Chief Davis took over the coordination for all the fire responses in the city. At six, yes, at six to eighteen that night, as the winds continued to build, Verdugo received multiple calls of fires reporting, of reporting fires up in the Eaton Canyon area. Upon the Canyon Close and Canyon Crest and Pine Crest neighborhoods, people were seeing out of their backyards a fire starting up on the hills of Eaton Canyon. Verdugo dispatched an augmented first alarm assignment, L.A. County dispatched an assignment, as well as A and F, knowing that this had the explosive growth potential. And again, we know what happened as that fire progressed. We took our spare engine that we had staffed, Engine two-fifty-one, and gave it to Pasadena as they were being impacted at this point, and it was assigned to protect the Jet Propulsion Lab, because at that point, there were no resources at the Jet Propulsion Lab, and there was great concern this fire was going to run the front country, cross the front of Mount Wilson, hook back, and start heading up the two-ten corridor. After several hours of protecting the JPL, they were moved and put onto a tactical patrol in Altadena, and basically were given the instruction, "Save what you can, don't get anybody hurt." So, for the next twenty-six hours, staff in the EOC amongst most of the disciplines in the city departments tracked and coordinated all service calls, mitigated as much, as many hazards as we could, and performed damage investigations. P. D. was transferring calls directly to the EOC, saving the step to go to Verdugo if it was a fire-related call, which took some of the load off Verdugo and gave us a little quicker response time. And in that, in a twelve-hour period between eight P. M. and eight A. M. the next day, where we would probably in fire have five or six calls overnight, we ran nearly fifty. As we know, the Eaton Fire continued to grow into a conflagration, and it decimated Altadena, as well as destroying structures in Pasadena and Sierra Madre. All told, as of today, over nine thousand structures were destroyed and over a thousand damaged, and just in the Altadena-Pasadena area, and the fire has grown to be over fourteen thousand acres. The good thing is that it's eighty-seven or eighty-nine percent contained, there's no active flame, and we're moving into recovery phase. So, what does this mean for us now? We have ash and debris falling into nearly all the San Gabriel cities, even near the fire footprint and in south like we are. Air quality up until today, when the winds kicked up again, has been extremely unhealthy. On Tuesday, the fourteenth, Fire Department staff had tallied with the help of other city departments an initial damage estimate, or I. D. E., and submitted that to the Los Angeles County Office of Emergency Management for inclusion in the damage claims for the county in an attempt to recoup our staff time, infrastructure damage, and other various damage to the city. At that point, the initial damage estimate was about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Kind of brings us to where we are today with the proclamation of a local emergency. The past practice in San Gabriel, unless it's been an incident like COVID or a major-major emergency, has been for us to piggyback onto the L.A. County Declaration. I. D. Submissions, the initial damage estimates are submitted from each city are forwarded to the state O. E. S. and FEMA through the county O. E. M., and that was the initial plan. On Saturday, I received a call from Chief Davis, who just talked to our Disaster Management Area Coordinator, who was recommending through the O. E. M. that each city make an individual proclamation for this event. After a few hours of consideration and discussion between the City Manager, the City Clerk, City Manager Lazaretto, acting as the Director of Emergency Services per our municipal codes and government code, determined that a local state of emergency existed and executed the proclamation. With an execution of that proclamation, the governing body or the City Council now needs to ratify that proclamation within seven days to keep it in force, and that's why we're here with this item tonight. Sort of what's going on and the reason we can, we still justify this emergency declaration is we're still in a red flag. It actually just is expiring at ten o'clock tonight. We're still in a fire weather warning, and with red flag warnings expected to go back into effect tomorrow and potentially now through Friday. And then to really, really put a bow onto this, by Saturday and Sunday, there's a prediction of potential rain and thunderstorms, which now, even though we're far removed from the fire footprint, we're downstream with two major washes that come through here with the potentials for debris flow flooding in the washes. So, this really justifies our maintaining the status of a local emergency. With this, staff recommends ratification of the local state of emergency proclamation as a full costed outcome of this disaster are unknown. As I said before, fallout in the form of ash and fire debris and poor air quality are an ongoing concern. The fire weather warning is still in effect for the majority of L.A. County, including the San Gabriel Valley, and as I said, the potential for another red flag warning from Wednesday evening into Thursday and now potentially Friday is on the horizon. There's still many unknown perils that could result from this event as the storms move through the rest of the winter. Therefore, it's prudent that we maintain our readiness in our state of local emergency. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief Wallace, and thank you so much for the services. Well, does any council member have a question for Chief to clarify? We just need to ratify by the proclamation today.
Correct.
I see. So, City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, so, I don't think we need to have any further discussion, so.
Move to approve.
Please, okay, motion has been made by Vice Mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Council Member Chen. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five-zero.
Thank you very much, again.
Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Mayor, I have no comment cards.
No public comments. Then the next one will be City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Two things for you tonight. I don't want to steal council's thunder, but I do want to thank our P. D. and Fire and Public Works, especially all of our staff, but P. D. and Fire and Public Works have been phenomenal and continue to be phenomenal throughout the disaster and working hand-in-hand with them. I can't be prouder of the team that you've all assembled, and I know that you all have comfort when you're serving the residents that we have, a team that can do that. So, thank you very much to those folks. And then, secondly, I hate to do this, what seems like a couple of meetings in a row, but I've got to bring Aldo up. He is leaving and going to the City of Lakewood. This will be his last council meeting, and I do want to thank him for his couple of years of service, four years to the city, and I wish you, Aldo, nothing but the best in your future endeavors. I will warn you, Aldo's an easy crier, so try to keep the comments to a minimum.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, so, yeah, it's already starting. Yeah, just wanted to say thank you for all your support, Mark, of course, the executive team behind me, Greg, if you're listening or watching, you're out there. Thanks for your support as well. He's not watching. But, yeah, of course, it goes without saying, you know, this is a great council, it's a great group, and it shows, the support, of course, shows a great deal, and as staff, whether presenting or sitting in the back, we feel that support, whether it's a council meeting or out in the public, we do feel it, and it's very appreciated. I want to say that from the bottom of my heart. Being a public servant for many, many years, it never goes without saying that it touches all of us and myself, and it continues to do that, and that's why I do what I do. I do this job to help our residents, to help our businesses, and also to help our council see their goals and objectives through, and that's why I'm here, and that's why I love doing this job, and so I love customer service, and I love doing it for this community, for San Gabriel, for many years, and so I take, you know, my skills and what I've learned for the last, wow, twenty-five years in this business at Lakewood, and with new goals and objectives and a whole, you know, bright-eyed look at to what I can do for that city and, but again, I wanted to say thank you for all of your support and for your help and for your guidance, and just being, you know, kind to me all these years, and so thank you, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Aldo. Any council member would like to just make some comments? Make him cry.
Don't go away. No, I was just going to say thank you for everything you've done these last past four years. I wish you would have stayed a little longer just for our Farmers Market, you know, two-point-oh. You've been instrumental in really trying to make it work the second time, but, you know, I know you've laid out the groundwork, and there's a lot of good things ahead of us. I know your staff will miss you, your colleagues will miss you, but I will miss you specifically because we've had great, great conversations and just, you know, the energy level that you've always had. I do truly appreciate it, so I wish you well in Lakewood. I'm not sure about the council there, so I can't say anything, can't say whether they're better than us or not. I don't even think I know one person from Lakewood, but, or one council, council member, but I do wish you luck, and hopefully I'll see you at some of the conferences, or paths we'll cross. It's a small community, I'm finding out, municipal community, so thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Council Member Chen.
Yes, Aldo, thank you for all the great work you've done for our city and your good sense of humor. We'll miss you, and hopefully, when we get Farmers Market two-point-oh up and running, you can come back as a civilian. Actually, dumplings and beer, too, all of it.
I'll be here for dumpling and beer.
You come, you come back as a civilian, just remember that you're a civilian, and you don't have to do the work.
Yeah.
I know it might come, come natural to you and just start, "All right, we're in work mode. Put the table over there, put that over there." But, yeah, it'd be great to have you support our community as a civilian at all our events, so thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Well, thank you, Council Member Chen, and Council Member Dean.
Thank you, Mayor. Aldo, it's, it's, thank you, did a good job, like dumpling beer and Farmers Market right now. How long we can expect it? Come back.
Next person.
Next person. Okay, all right, but just a reminder, if dumpling beer let your Lakewood residents come to our city.
That's right.
Bring them all up here.
Okay, all right. Thank you, good job, yeah.
Aldo, for the couple of seconds that I've got into interact with you at this capacity, no, man, but I've interacted with you at a different capacity before, and you've always been refined, just a gentleman, well-groomed, and just polite and accessible, so I do appreciate you, and I've seen you walk in the streets, too, going to Blossom Market and so on and so forth, see your energy, and I really appreciate your energy and just the way where you walk in, you know, you shine up the room, so I'm sure you're going to be shining up Lakewood, and you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Aldo, I'm good at many things, but really bad with say goodbye, but to me, I truly cherish, you know, cherish that, the memories that we have together, I mean, since the day one I became the councilman, and I think you have left a very good impression to our, you know, community, and also your footprints here that will show is that you have what you have dedicated to our city and make our city so prosperous like today. So, you'll be missed, but I, of course, I agree with my colleagues that please come back for beer. We, we have a lot of good stuff, but beer is the best, and I look forward to see you again, and I wish you the best in the new venture, and anytime, if anything, that you need us, just give us a call. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, hold it tears, let's continue with the council comments and conference meeting report. Who would like to go first? Yes, Council Member Chen.
All right, I'll keep this short. On January thirteenth, I attended my monthly Chinese American Citizens Alliance meeting. It's a local Chinese club, they meet in Monterey Park, and on January eighteenth, I attended Monterey Park's, our neighbor, Monterey Park Lunar New Year Festival, and I look forward to our San Gabriel Lunar New Year Festival, February first and second, twenty-twenty-five. Please come out. That means you, too, Aldo. You better show up. It's going to be, and it's, as most of you know, it will be run, co-sponsored, co-hosted by World Journal. They're the same organization that co-sponsors Monterey Park, so it'll probably be a similar setup and feel, and please correct me if I'm incorrect here, I believe that our festival on the first and second is ten A. M. to nine P. M. on Saturday and ten A. M. to seven P. M. Sunday? Does that sound about right? Okay, well, please come out, and, all right, see you all there.
Thank you, Council Member Chen. Who's next? Vice Mayor? Yes.
Council Member Chen said to hurry up, so I'll keep it brief. So, on January sixth, before the fires, I got the opportunity, I heard that many of the council here has gotten the opportunity to ride and visit Chief Wallace and has gone through the rigorous training boot camp, where you put on the suit and you grab the hose and you start watering things down, and it almost feels like the little rascals when you're grabbing that hose, and then they tried to make me do like a real interesting squatting, walking maneuver, which I couldn't do, and it just showed me how much, how much the firefighters have to endure, and he warned me about the fires, potential fires and winds, because of the winds, the fires because of the winds, a potential hazard, and I had no idea that that was going to happen, but he did give me a fair warning, and we did go witness one small fire, and I just want to say thank you, and thank you for our fire department and our first responders for such amazing work that you do on a day-to-day, hours and hours, you know, thirty-six, is it thirty-six hours? I believe thirty-six-hour shifts or like twenty-four-hour shifts. It's just amazing just to see the facility and how much they put into the city and how they sleep in the city for that period of time as well, and say bye to the families and then just stay, and to witness the camaraderie within our fire department as well, it's just, it's just incredible just to see one fire department here in San Gabriel and not just, you know, we had so many firefighters going out to the fire, and it just makes me, you know, it moves me so much to see all the hard work that fire departments in general have to endure, and just my heart is with the victims of the Eaton and Palisades fires, and everybody affected because, you know, everybody had to endure. I can only imagine the firefighters, what they had to endure, and then the victims and the people helping and the first responders and the people volunteering and the community just standing up and trying to support in every single way that they could, if it was social media, if it was just getting the word out and informing the community about the air quality and all that, right? I also got the opportunity to see the EOC, not in the capacity of the mayor, I know he went to see the EOC in action, I'm kind of jealous, but, well, seriousness, but just my heart's with the victims, and we will recoup, we will recuperate, and thank you Fire Department, Chief Wallace, thank you so much, Chief Elizondo, thank you so, Elizondo, thank you so much for your help as well. I yield, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'm just going to focus on the victims, too. It's been quite the journey just watching neighbors, helping neighbors, strangers helping strangers, and of course, our first responders. San Gabriel was out in front, both our police and fire, and so I just think, you know, I've had people ask me, you know, how they can help in meaningful ways, and I just wanted to just provide some options, you know. Number one, of course, monetary donations is still the best for fire victims. Unfortunately, I know quite a few families who've lost their homes, and that's what they need right now. There's organizations like GoFundMe, of course, but now we know that you have to be careful what it says, because if it's specific to disaster-related expenses, they might disqualify them from getting some FEMA assistance, and as we all are finding out more than we want to know, I guess, if you, if you're insured, you don't qualify for FEMA. It's only for people without insurance or underinsured. But there's other great organizations, there's the World Central Kitchen, Core, that was actually here in San Gabriel, Sean Penn, during my term as mayor, I got to meet Sean Penn, but anyway, he was on TV, but Core is back. But anyway, he was on TV, but Core is back helping, you know, disasters. There's the California Community Foundation, the American Red Cross, and number of animal rescue centers. Regarding in-kind, and they're still accepting items at various locations, but please verify that they're still accepting them, because many of these groups are, have reached capacity, and they just can't, they're turning people away now. So try to get some details either from your local news or visit some trusted websites, because now they're being much more specific. For example, a lot of baby stuff, whether it's diapers or formula. And then lastly, of course, you can always volunteer your time, but if you do, please stay safe by wearing protective clothing and proper masks to filter out all the harmful smoke and ash toxins. So again, you know, I, it really brought, brings hope, at least in my soul, to see so many good people out there that are doing their best, but it is difficult, it is a very difficult time, and, you know, I know it firsthand just because of the people I know who've suffered. But anyway, that was all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Dean.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I echo the Vice Mayor. So consider, yeah, thanks to our city, the fire and the PD, it's really active for after the windy, okay? But I just want to bring up for the, some area with outage for the electricity, even some businesses out, they don't have the electricity like two days. I hope, actually, they are asking, but I don't think we city have some enough financial one, but, but I can, is the city, is it impossible to find some assistance for them? I think the FEMA is one of the kind to assist them for this kind of small business, because they, the outage for the electricity, they don't have, the refrigeration, it's a waste of some, something like that, okay? So if the city can have the website or to help them to recover that, okay? And, yeah, so I glad today's we also just passed the resolution for the, for the emergency service, yeah. And from the last one, okay, I just want to, for the some community event, so on the December, that's back to the December twenty-third.
Don't start January.
Okay, no, no, no. That's San Gabriel Hope Line Club, kind of provide a senior service, Rebecca know that, okay? So, so it's a local nonprofit organization really want to help. Actually, I just add on like even, even like this tragedy, okay? So I feel like our neighborhood, a lot like neighborhood, they do the kind of donation to like our local city, like Pasadena and Acadia, okay? So local, the community members really want to help the victim. I, I, I want to honor them and also encourage our rest of the people if they interested to help. And the, on the, okay, on the January sixteenth, the SGB car, and I hear about it, so goal line will be extended from the Asusa to, I think it's the Grandora, the city, so they extended more community, but our city is still not really benefit on it because it's far away for us. So I have talked to them, so regarding that, to like last mile, how can they help our city of San Gabriel resident to use the goal line, too? And I bring up another issue to the CAG meeting, actually, this time, for the, when I wake up, it's outage to the electricity, you cannot cook the breakfast. So I bring that the issue, if we just like only for the electricity, so it's not a good the way to do it, we should be provided, I hope state can help to listen to us, provide them a more variety, the resource, so, you know, for the gas or something else, you know? So that's another consideration. And on the eighteen, January eighteen, just last Saturday, I have a couple, actually, I have a lot of event, but these two event I want to mention, it's called a weak community health and wellness event, and that's provide local clinic and adult center, it's a really good provider, the care fair for our local resident. And another one, I got invited to go, this, they are our San Gabriel community, the member, he's like, he's, it's just passed away on the, and January first, and it's one oh four, okay? It's a long life. And he also, he's a professor, Yu Fangming, okay? So it's, he's like also community member, role model, it's even, even one oh three, he still attend the community, the event to encourage people to do the community service. And the last one, it's encourage everybody reserve day for the February first and the second to join us, the, our, the Latin, Lunar Latin Festival, okay? I think based on current, today, this, right now, we expecting should be, every year will be more better, the this kind of event. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Dean, so I will just do my, conclude my report, and I thank you so much for sharing the report. But when we began discussion with World Journal a few months ago, that we, I included Disney Adventure Booth on my wishlist for our Lantern Festival. I envisioned a photo booth and a handcraft activities area to serve, to entertain our especially young visitor, the age like my daughters. But unfortunately, since this is one of, this is our very first time to collaborating with World Journal for our Lunar New Year event, and due to the, the event dates were so close with the multi-part festival, we couldn't secure the Disney booth this year. However, I had, I would like to that, you know, our community and also Rebecca, that knows that I had the privilege to communicate with Mr. Erwin Drew, and Drew, he is the Disney Community Engagement Representative. So with his, with his permissions, I'm able to disclose that what will be happening next, that I would like to, of course, I would like to thank him for his support. While that Disney won't have an official booth this year in our city, but they will send representative to attend our event in an undercover capacity to evaluate our festival, so we got to do the things good. And they will consider to join us officially for next year Lunar Lantern Festival. So I hope Vice Mayor will continue this effort and push it forward. Personally, I think graveyard will be a great and ideal location for Disney booth, and as we aim to make our city events more engaging and enjoyable. And on January seventh, I joined city manager Mark Lazaretto, Chief Wallace, Chief Elizade, Chief Davis, and Captain Nakamura, and many of our first responders. When we activated the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, to address the change from the Sinaina winds, while it is unfortunate that our neighboring cities like Pasadena, Altadena, and Pacific Palisades suffer such tragic losses, including homes and even lives, I'm so proud that how our police and fire stepped in to assist those in need. A special thank you to our Public Works Department for their quick response in repairing and cleaning up our city. Lastly, I am very excited to share a surprise update from across the ocean. Our newest sister city, Huaiyang County in Taiwan, has sent a special gift to us, a large lanterns shipped in a forty-foot container, and now it's in ocean already. It's currently en route to the port of Los Angeles, and after custom clearance, we expect like two days, we anticipate it will arrive just one day before our Lantern Festival. I haven't seen the lantern, how it looks like, but if everything goes smoothly, it will join the beautiful Lantern Festival, and also the lanterns that gifted by the Taiwan Tourism Administration as an eye-catching highlight of our festival. So this generous gift, including shipping, custom clearance, and logistics, was fully covered by Huaiyang County. With no financial impact to our city, I really sincere thank the magistrate of Huaiyang County, Xu Zhenwei, and the people of Huaiyang for their friendship and support. So that concludes my report. So closed section, we have non-adjournment. The city council would like to adjourn tonight by expressing heartfelt condolence, condolences to the communities of Altadena, Pasadena, Pacific Palisades, and everyone affected by these fires. We deeply appreciate all the first responders for their endless expertise in supporting during these challenging times. We also express our condolences to those who have lost their family members, pets, and their homes. The next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand twenty-five, at six thirty PM. Meeting adjourned at, what time? I'm sorry.